All right, it is seven oh one. I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Our first item of business is the pledge allegiance. Selectman Muskin, would you lead us?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, all members of the Board of Selectmen are here in presence. We'll turn to the approval of the regular board meeting minutes from August seventh, two thousand and twenty five.
Make a motion to reject the regular meeting minutes of Thursday, August seventh, two thousand and twenty five, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Are there corrections?
Did find one. It's on page six for Paul Anderson. He's at eighty-nine Main Street.
Good. Other corrections?
Never do that.
Hearing none. All in favor of the minutes as amended, please say aye.
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 Opposed? So carried. We'll turn now to public participation. This is one of two opportunities for members of the public to address the Board of Selectmen. I'll first ask if there's anybody in the room who would like to do so, and then I'll provide anybody who's with us online the same opportunity. Is there anybody here who would like to address the members of the board? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Paul Anderson, eighty-nine Main Street, Broadbrook. I just wanted to note the passing of Henry Moss.
Yes.
And Henry's restaurant is permanently closed.
Oh, I didn't know that part.
Well, that's good, of course, but that's life.
Yeah, certainly certainly a landmark and institution here.
Nineteen fifty-seven.
Other public comments? Is there other public comments? Asking again, is there other public comments? Turn to anybody who's with us online. Is there anyone online who would like to address the members of the Board of Selectmen or not on the agenda? Hearing none? Okay. There will be another opportunity later in the meeting for a second second by the panel. As has has been our practice from time to time, the Board of Selectmen enjoys recognizing service of people who have contributed to the community for long periods of time. And we have a gentleman here who I believe has spent over forty years in that capacity.
Two years.
Forty-two years. Mr. Saka has been a member of the Wetlands Commission for a very, very long time. I will share, I'm forty-three years old. So is there anything you'd like to share about your your time, your your experiences, lessons learned?
Very enjoyable. Really learned a lot, too.
Well, certainly you saw a lot of things happen in the community, and we appreciate your service. I do have a presentation I'd like to offer to Michael Saka. So the Town of East Windsor recognizes Michael Saka for your commitment, your leadership, and your unselfish dedication to the Conservation Commission, Inland Wetlands Water Course Empathy, and the Town of East Windsor. We thank you for more than forty years of service. Your efforts, energy, and passion will be with us always. You have truly made a difference in our community. Given on behalf of the entire Board and Selectmen of the Town of East Windsor this fourth day of September, two thousand and twenty-five, Mr. Saka, thank you very much. Selectman Baker, this was your initiative. Is there anything you'd like to add?
I just want to extend my thanks as well. I mean, I served with him for quite a few years, and he was also always very knowledgeable and and knew the history behind where everything was and and where all the water was flowing throughout town. So we need that kind of dedication. And if you want to put in an application, come back anytime after you've had a rest, we'd be welcome. We'd welcome you.
Thanks very much.
Okay, we will turn now to presentations. I have an invited guest this evening. Parth Shaw is a an executive with a company called Polymorphic. Polymorphic is a company that is setting up AI solutions for municipal governments and how AI can be integrated into municipal service delivery. Mr. Parth and I had a, I'm sorry, Mr. Shaw and I had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I invited him to give a presentation of the whole board and so the town can hear and see a bit about how AI is coming into municipal governance. So, Mr. Shaw, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Appreciate appreciate you all having me. It was a pleasure to be out there in person. I want to, it feels like a month ago, but I know it was only a few weeks back. So I've heard a little presentation here, and I know AI has been a topic that, you know, there's a lot of coverage, obviously, in the news and other folks were using it, but really our focus is really on customer service, right? You know, one of the things that we see, and I kind of laid out an example here of how things work today in most municipalities. You know, anything, any service we need, it usually starts with a question, right? We want to build something, or there's an issue with the road. And it's often very complicated for for most cases, which department handles it. There's a lot of pages on the website. It can sometimes be complicated to navigate, and all I want to do is have a have a simple question answered. And so the journey, you know, folks sometimes go through is you go to the website, and there's there's fifteen different department pages, and there's subpages within that. And then, you know, you can call in, but if it's after hours or on a weekend, it's it's it can be challenging. And so it it can sometimes be a bit of a process from you go through the phone tree, through the departments, you get routed to the right spot. And finally, when, you know, you've got the right form, often you have to to print it out, download it, mail it in, keep calling for updates, which, you know, is not not necessarily the easiest for 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 a lot of folks. And then on the other side, for for the staff who are doing the work, it's extremely time consuming amongst all the other pieces of their their job they have, right? And a lot of, we do a lot of work in New Jersey, and there's an example of a municipality where over half the calls each department we're getting were actually meant for other departments, right? So that was taken away from time they they wanted to be spending, you know, actually processing permits or or working through that. And then, of course, for leadership, it's it's hard to make sense of, hey, what are the top issues or the top things we're hearing from our from our community? Because it's very hard to have kind of a holistic view of what are those questions we're seeing? Maybe we want to reorganize our website, but it's hard to know if you don't know what folks are curious about, what the top questions are. And so that's really where we come in, right? We're a, we're really a customer service platform, and the whole idea is to offer another, just another experience. It's it's, you can opt into it. It's not like a requirement, but I'll show a few examples from some sites. But the whole idea is to provide really simple, straightforward answers that are personalized, whether it's on the website through a chatbot, if it's after hours via phone, email, et cetera, or if you want even text it, and then it'll actually route you to that right department. We have some tools that allow folks to be able to apply very easily online. It has, we jokingly call it the Domino's Pizza tracker, so you can see where in the process you are. And then some really great tools for staff to be able to collaborate internally and make that process easier, so they can turn around those applications or requests faster and get them resolved. So you know, I I once saw this, and I and it really resonated with me. My background, I did engineering at MIT, but my family backgrounds in local and state government. My grandfather, utility director his whole career. So I've seen a lot of government customer service operations upfront. And, you know, something to all say is, is a lot of it sometimes feels like laundry and dishes. It's just the repeat operational work. And if we can make that easier, it lets us do, it lets staff focus on on things that they've always wanted to spend time doing in terms of improving the community, other programs, projects that you just don't have time to get to. Because there's just so much time to just keep the the basic lights on, all the roads, roads running, everything. So our job is just to be a small part of helping with that. Yeah, as you all know, obviously, we're getting very used to a new level of customer experience. Whether that's a good or bad thing, it is what's happening. We're expecting often instant gratification, SaaS and tracking. But some of the nice things are, it's, we're used to being able to get our questions answered very easily. We can do more online self-service as an option. And so a lot of that, we, you know, governments want to be able to bring in, but it's it's difficult, right? It's, you have budget considerations. The biggest consideration often is how much time staff even has to be able to invest in those new initiatives. And so that's really the focus for us. So it's real quick, I'm going to show a few examples from some sites, just to give an idea of, you know, what it is that we do and and why we think it's helpful. So we have here, you know, in Florida, North Miami Beach, about twelve thousand residents, Prospect Park, about forty-seven hundred residents, Nevada County, about a forty, fifty thousand person resident county. And one of the things that they wanted to offer was kind of a twenty-four seven. If you have a question, maybe you want to get a permit. The search experience often returns a hundred different pages. It's unclear, you know, what what it is I need to do. It's not laid out. I can't ask it like a a question and just get a simple answer back. And this is where the polymorphic technology comes in. So it is a closed content. It's only based on the content from the the East Windsor website, the municipal code, so it's 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 accurate. And you can see right here, it lays it out in a really nice kind of bolded list, very clear to guide. And I could ask, you know, follow-up questions, things like that. It has my sources listed for me. So I could click here on their apply for a building permit page, or the, you know, citizen access portal. And it'll just guide me right through that and takes me right to that right link that I need, which is great. You know, then we have similar kind of experience here with both Miami Beach, and then we also have a version that's more like a search. So it looks like a search bar that you can ask questions into. Again, it can even say like, when is my trash picked up? And I'll go ahead and analyze that question based on the content and provide an answer. So that's kind of the stuff that's able to do, right? Makes that really easy. I can just ask questions and and get answers instead of having to read through pages. And then the other side of it is is for those applications, making that easier, where you can get those kind of status trackers on that. So, you know, an example of that, which I can just showcase real quick here, would be a form like this, where you'd be able to go in, there, these would be embedded on the site. But I could see all my active applications, so I have that full transparency. You would be able to see what step of the process you're in. I could go and click into that, or I could start a new application very easily. And it's very easy to guide through. And a lot of times, some of these applications get very, very complicated. And so oftentimes, you fill out the information, and then there's there's issues with it, like in this case, it needs to be, say, over ten thousand dollars for it to be the the right application. And so it can actually do reviews and give that guidance back to an applicant, saying, hey, you know, we found some parts of your application that need attention. So you can still submit it, but it's giving you that feedback, making that very clear. So that's kind of the basics on it. We do a lot of work across the country. We're one of the leading providers in this space. We're focused exclusively on government. You know, some of the use cases we've listed here, Castle Pines in Colorado was able to make their content more accessible. Passaic County, the surrogate court, they serve over ninety-one languages in that county, and they were able to support that through that chatbot experience which supports many different languages. So you can ask in any language you'd like as well. Here in another county in North Carolina, they were able to, in the case of a disaster, actually spin up an application very quickly and and allow folks to report. Actually, twenty-five percent of the county after Hurricane Helene was able to report debris reports and and get them resolved, and they actually use that to get funds from FEMA. So that was very, very helpful for them. And then here, a small town in Wisconsin was able to help with, you know, staff being burdened with repeat inquiries. They had a lot of turnover, and they made their permit process so much easier, where they gave folks the option to be able to pay and do do more things online. So I'll pause there. First, if there's anything I missed, or you feel like would be worth worth covering, let me know. But really appreciate you having me present and provide a little bit of the high level of of what we're doing to help make customer service really great in municipalities across the country, working with over a hundred organizations and three hundred departments across the country, and also make it really easy for staff to focus on the things they want to be able to focus on.
Questions or comments for Parth?
Hey. Um, Pars, I appreciate the, you're rolling this out to municipalities. I probably like a lot of people active in understanding what's happening with AI. I spend time every day reading about and and using AI and trying to figure out where we're going with this. And and to see it now coming out, rolling out through businesses and municipalities is really, really exciting. Because we're getting the first, the first wave of AI tools and AI use coming into our lives, right? Like through this process here. A couple of questions. So like, you said you're going to only confine the answers and the work to the to the the local data. And does that mean that you're going to have like a privacy wall up so that our communications and people's individual inquiries and everything won't go into a larger AI network?
That's right, yeah. So we, none of it gets trained on, or none of the data is stored by, like, when you, when one folks use ChatGPT, obviously, it can it can store that information that it won't be used for training. So all that data is private and protected. Every request is encrypted, both in transit and then and as it rests. And the, it's it's a walled garden of content, right? So it's not pulling stuff from anywhere on the internet. It's just going to be your code, the website, other PDF documentation we want to put into that knowledge base.
Now, we have like, everything is moving really fast, and anybody that's following it and using it knows how fast it's moving. The new ChatGPT five Pro and all the agent work, and it just is way different than it was three months ago, or four or five months ago. And it's moving so fast. In three, four, or five, six months, it's going to be way more different than it is today. I think you agree with that. So how how do you folks like keep up with moving that into your customers? Because we don't just want to have ultimately the simple interface that you're talking about. Again, that's what you're doing now, but I know you guys have bigger design in mind for us in terms of how we manage this, right? We should be able to communicate on issues and talk about our applications and talking about all of it, right, with through AI. So how are you going to keep up with that? And what do you plan for like rolling out upgrades to your customers?
Yeah. So one of the great things is is we roll out our upgrades to to our customers as they happen. And we have a very strong engineering team that comes from background at Google, other AI companies. So our team is always developing and building with our customers. And, you know, I'd love to pretend that our features were our own ideas, but they actually came from, you know, many of our customers. So we we partner with all our organizations we work with and and actually build features with them. In fact, internally, many of our product features are named after customers because they came from different municipal employees or cities we did work with. So we're very, we're very partner focused. We're different from, I think, a lot of old legacy companies in the space that kind of ship a product and then don't really update, work with the cities. Everyone gets a dedicated client success manager from our team who works with the the municipality. And so those are some of the ways that we always make sure there's a way where there's a forum for us to get new ideas and new feedback from you all, and we're able to roll out things that that make anything that we can help with easier, continue to to expand what we can offer.
And I have one last question. And I'm thinking in terms of public information, public right to know, FOIA, and all of that.
Yep.
Have you, how are you yet building in how to manage data that may be requested down the road by people through like a FOIA request? Is that part of your? Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, so we have tools for any of the data that is in the system that is public records requestable. We have, we have easy ways to to export that. And then we have actually plans for a really exciting product we'll be rolling out soon to make public records requests easier to to process. One of the big challenges, there's so much content going into them. Oftentimes, there are often existing public records requests that are already relevant when a new one is made, so being able to point to the right example. And so that's a new kind of development we're going to have soon, which is a product, which is our AI Public Records Request Module.
Thank you.
Very good. Just quickly, how do you, how are you going to program the system so that if there's, say, there was something passed in March of two thousand and twenty-six, I'll just throw just any numbers, so nobody tracks it to anything else. And then in two thousand and twenty-eight, there's been amendment to it. How is your system going to track the original approval or denial against what's happened later on down the road? Because sometimes it's four or five different things that are happening. Currently, AI, what I've seen in some areas, the information is accurate, and other things I just lack because it's against all kinds of stuff. And I'm sure you've had run into some of those things. So how, as a municipality, what's that going to do to the workload to try to purge the system so that the accurate information gets out if somebody was to do a FOI, for example?
Yes, in terms of the content, too, from the AI answer standpoint, we are always refreshing the content it's basing its knowledge base on. So you can imagine when a website page is updated, or I think meetings is a good example for a resolution that's passed. So it will update and stay fresh with the new content, and that's part of the value, because I think a lot of these, you know, tools like ChatGPT, they're trained on the entire internet. They're trained once on it, right? So, which is a great tool for general questions, but when it comes to up-to-date, accurate, factual knowledge, the problem is if it was trained in two thousand and twenty-four, based on an article out there, it's only going to provide the information it knew from two thousand and twenty-four. So by focusing on on the website, the code, et cetera, we're also rechecking those either weekly or monthly, depending on whatever cadence you all want to set. And it will update that page. So if there's a change made, it'll then use the the newest content for that, but you still have the archive of what it was answering if someone had asked a question before the content was updated.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Did you have something?
I'm good.
Okay. So, Parth, if we wanted to move forward and integrate this into what we offer, what what do we do next?
Yeah, so one of the things that we proposed is part of our setup, which is which is very exciting, because we're, as I mentioned, we're starting to grow and and see interest in Connecticut. As we've created a very exciting pilot program, and the setup is very easy. We would run an initial hold the knowledge base from the website, those PDFs, the code, and it'd be as simple as a embed code we could copy and paste to get started with that chatbot and then and then go from there. So those setups often take less than thirty minutes, which is great. It's really easy for for staff to get onto the site. And then we have that kind of pilot program running right now, which is very exciting for the early municipalities here in in Connecticut.
May I ask what town in Connecticut, off the top of your head, that if I wanted to give them a call, see how it's turning out, working out for them? Is that acceptable, or is that against your policy?
No, that's that's totally fine. I I can actually provide references. You know, I think some of the customers in New Jersey I mentioned would be a good example, because they've been with us for for over a year, Connecticut being a new place we're doing work in. But Prospect Park, their former business administrator, I'd be happy to to make an introduction to. And we work with over a third of the counties in the state already in New Jersey, so happy to to make introductions where it would be helpful.
Little premature, little premature right now, but thank you for the answer, though.
Jason? Can you replay what she said? I can't hear her. I'm sorry.
Was your, can you repeat?
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I thanked him for his reply.
Can you repeat it? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
She thanked him for his reply.
Okay.
I have a voice problem. You guys are all aware of that.
No worries. I'm taking it.
Chair up front, I'd like to come a little closer. That'll help you.
Well, Parth, we have a town meeting that starts about five minutes. So if there's no other questions from the board, I'm going to thank you for your time this evening. And we'll we'll circle back if there's interest on our side.
Perfect. Appreciate it. Thank you all for having me, and I appreciate you all having me for ten minutes to present here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Portman, no.
Step down.
Oh, that's just one. All right, yeah, can we just recess the Board of Selectmen meeting, please?
Make a motion to recess the Board of Selectmen meeting at seven twenty-seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are in recess at seven twenty-seven. All right, it is seven thirty-four. I'm going to call the special town meeting to order. I have an agenda. All right, our first item of business is going to be the election of a moderator. Are there nominations? Yes, sir.
The nominee, Jason Bowza is my.
Are there other nominations? Are there, are there other nominations? Asking again, are there other nominations? Hearing none, a motion to close nominations would be in order.
Oh.
A motion made by Rick. Is there a second to close nominations? Seconded by Sarah. All in favor of closing nominations, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All in favor of Jason Bowza as moderator, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. I'm now going to ask the town clerk to read the notice of the public hearing of the town meeting.
Town of East Windsor Public Town Meeting Notice. The legal voters of the Town of East Windsor are hereby warned that a town meeting will be held in the John Daly Junior Meeting Room, Town Hall, Eleven Rice Street, Broadbrook, Connecticut, on Thursday, September fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, at seven thirty PM for the following. One, to consider and vote on authorizing the allocation of two hundred thousand dollars of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA interests to fund contract geriatric social work services dated at East Windsor, Connecticut, this twenty-eighth day of August, two thousand and twenty-five. East Windsor Board of Selectmen, Jason E. Bowza, First Selectman, Marie De Souza, Deputy Selectman, Sarah Muska, Selectman, Alan Baker, Selectman, and Keith Yageloff, Selectman.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. I am now going to read the eligibility to vote. This is from the Connecticut General Statutes, Chapter ninety, Section seven dash six. At any town meeting other than a regular or special town election, or at any meeting of any fire, sewer, or school district, or any other municipal subdivision of any town incorporated by any special act, any person who is an elector of such town may vote. And any citizen of the United States over the age of eighteen years or more, who jointly or separately is liable to the town, district, or subdivision for taxes assessed against him in an assessment of not less than one thousand dollars on the last completed grand list of such town, district, or subdivision, or who would be so liable, if not entitled, to an exemption under Connecticut General Statutes, subdivision seventeen, nineteen, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five, or twenty-six of Section twelve dash eighty-one, may vote unless restricted by the provisions of any special act relating to such town, district, or subdivision. So I'm now going to ask whoever has resolution number one to raise the the res, raise the item, please.
One, to consider and vote on authorizing the allocation of two hundred thousand dollars of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA interest to fund contract geriatric social work services. I move the foregoing resolution to be adopted.
Is there a second?
Second, second.
A motion seconded by Denise, a motion made by Alan. Any discussion on the resolution? Yes, I'm sorry, I I saw the gentleman in the back. Go ahead, sir. Name and address, please.
Steve asked to make you a little circle. Question is, after this allocation of interest has been used up, where is the P D I C O? Cancel that the services.
It's a pilot program, uh, which means that it's by design supposed to sunset. What the um the duration of time will provide for is the aggregation of data to support whether or not it needs to be something that needs to be incorporated in the town's budget or not. There was somebody else. Was it Nicole?
So at the pre-prosthetic hall drive. I'm just curious as to why this would come to be when there's Medicare agents that do this for their clients, for the people that are fifty-five and sixty-five. There's two-on-one, there are CHR, there's all of these three resources. So I don't see why they would even put it on the on the docket to um even threaten, not threaten, but. To use taxpayer money, especially after the horrendous referendum we just went through.
Uh, Director Maltesi, can you speak to what the uh services that will be provided for under this initiative would be?
More than just Medicare counseling, having a choiceless counselor on staff. This is for um aging and place services to help. Many of our residents that do not have family and friends who continue to live in their home. To figure out the processes of how to possibly sell their home. Um, meet meet with them on a daily basis to help them develop the services. Uh, we have a number of first responders that are are responding to these homes and. Don't necessarily have the ability to refer them to services where they can get daily needs um met. And are trying to get a number of these services put into place so that uh their daily need, their daily needs and long-term planning. Um, processes are taken care of. We can use resources, free resources for them. All right. Uh, we've seen a number of instances where there is like multiple uh multiple hour wait for two-on-one services. Uh, our numbers for elderly detective search and referrals have drawn up extensively. Uh, the EPS staff themselves have said that they are understaffed. Um, and don't have the resources to help the people that uh. The volume that they are seeing. Um, so we are looking to kind of be self-sufficient in regards to being able to help the residents here in East Windsor.
Yes, sir. Name and address.
My name's Keith Danilow. Twenty-five Depot Street. I'm on the board selection and I was here as part of the discussion. That took place on this issue and I actually voted against it for the evening and I've given a lot of thought and I just want to share my um. My feelings with you and and uh as follows. Um. At the meeting, I said, you know, we already have senior services, um, employees in town. We have social services employees in town. I think there is five or six full-time employees that are providing those services right now. And then um what we were told, what I was told when I asked the question, which was why if we have. Multiple full-time employees. We're paying hundreds of thousands of dollars for these departments right now. We're supposed to be providing the services for seniors that come in and for other people that have disabilities that come in. That's the job of those departments. I send to connect them up with resources and to help to find the places that they're supposed to go. I said, why are we doing this? And the answer was, well, we don't have a a licensed social worker. This is healthcare, we were, I was told. They didn't use the word healthcare. They said it's social work. We don't have a licensed social worker on staff. To provide the type of intensive licensed social work that you need. When a senior person, for example, is having a crisis and the police come out and they have a crisis. And I said, how many times is this happening in a year? And they said, we don't know. I said, well, why are we spending two hundred thousand dollars on a pilot program? Well, you don't even know if you need it. And they said, well, we're going to spend two hundred thousand dollars and we'll find out if we need it. And then I did more research on this because I wanted to make sure my feelings that night were true. I wanted to confirm. You know, can you call two-on-one? Because that's what other towns do. If you have a crisis. And the police come out or you have a crisis for an elderly person or for a disabled person, you call two-on-one. And they immediately put you into to connection with people at the Department of Social Services that are first responders. That provide mental health care and provide crisis care. And there's a company called CHR, Community Health Resources, in our in our area. And they provide exactly these services and Medicare will pay for it. And if you're on social security and you're and you're on social security, it will pay for all of that. And if you have health insurance, it will pay for it. And we have inter-community overseas Hartford, and they do exactly this work. And right now, if you call two-on-one because a family member is having a crisis. They will immediately send out emergency worker. That's going to, that's going to, uh, that's going to work with the police to make sure that person is safe. And it's going to work with their family members to make sure that person is safe. So then I said, why are we paying two hundred thousand dollars? For our services that are paid for by the state, that are offered by the state, that are right there today. We have a robust two-on-one system. And I guarantee you, if you have a call to two-on-one, if the police are there, you're going to have someone from the Department of Social Services. Or CHR at your home to provide for that crisis. And those are the licensed social workers. Those are the healthcare providers. The town shouldn't. And so what we're doing is we're going to contact with a private provider. That has staff on, maybe they they outsource their own staff. We don't even know where their staff comes from. We're going to pay two hundred thousand dollars to a private provider. That's going to, we call them up and then they're going to arrange to get that person out there. We don't even know how quickly that's going to be. We have students in this town. We have young children. That need supports in their schools. There's just layoffs of staff over at the schools. Parent professionals, teachers, people leaving at the school. I'd rather see two hundred thousand dollars be used for our children. When, only because these services are ready to pay for by the state and by your insurance. Towns don't do this. Towns don't do private, unless you're Greenwich. And you want to, and you have a deep pockets or dairy end, and you want to provide special services for your community because you can afford it. That's what you would do it. East Windsor isn't that town. You know, I want to vote no. I hasn't changed my mind. My research didn't change my mind. But I respect anyone that wants to vote yes. Because you want to make that a priority. But for me, it's a no.
Your other public comment. I saw a hand in the back and then two in the front.
Just get a clarification. Mr. Jageloff seems to be talking about crisis situations, but my understanding is, I I think. That it is not just crisis. It's ongoing services. Could we just get a clarification on that?
Uh, Mrs. Maltesi. Uh, that's Elizabeth.
So again, this is uh both short-term and long-term planning so that people can continue to live in East Windsor. Be taxpayers in the town, be comfortable living in uh aging in place, having their needs met. Um, we. As you age, some of your faculties will leave you. And so sometimes you're not able to make that call to two-on-one on your home. So we're looking to get them the support so that they can do that. And just by connecting them to the services that we have. And utilizing them and then adding in this geriatric social worker who will be a licensed clinical social worker, which we currently don't have, is correct on that. Um, we're able to provide them a wide variety of more specific. Uh, in-town services so that we don't have to send them to the state.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Bonnie Yaski, Seven Yaski Road, Broadbrook, Connecticut. So we do not have a social worker on uh in town in the human service department at all.
That is correct.
If I remember correct. After Betsy, then that was one of the things that they were looking for and they were only going to take a licensed social worker.
She has since left town service.
Then would you think we should get a licensed social worker and use our money with a licensed social worker?
Yes. Which is trying to do.
Yeah, but that's geriatric. That's not for everybody in town. There's a big difference, a big difference. And I am in the elderly. Category. And that. So I I I'm not for it at all. I don't, I mean, for. No, just to get data? No.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, Rita Souza, ten Rice Road, Broadbrook. Um, I also sit on the. Sorry, I also sit on the board of selectmen. I voted yes for this service. Um, first of all, just for point of clarification on my part. Um, the two hundred thousand, that's key stating that's going to be used. For this, that's two hundred thousand dollars that's going to be set aside for the program if it's approved. To be utilized as it's used. So it's not going to be just, somebody's going to come in and two hundred thousand dollars and go on tomorrow. It's going to be used on an as-needed basis. That's my interpretation. I, for one, probably believe that East Windsor has a population that's aging. Um, as we speak and having spent a lot of years up Park Hill, worked with a lot of people up there. Well, aging myself, um. It's not as easy as people think. We all sit here and say, somebody has medical insurance, somebody isn't able to pick up the phone and call nine-one-one. But I'm going to use an example without any names. I remember getting phone calls. Um, three years ago now, um, about a woman that was sleeping on the park bench in town. Why isn't the town doing anything for her? Why isn't town doing anything for her? Well. Town was doing the best and finally was able to get the healthy individual we need. But if we had a geriatric social worker in town. That can deal with those types of things, we have a lot of them now. Um, and you know, um. Without getting into it, we know we have homes, people living in certain neighborhoods in town, you know, these people, um, that don't have medical insurance. Get a geriatric person in town, but I don't know that individual on a regular basis when they need to talk to someone because. I, for one, I've had a need call CHR with, you know, they use, and I think it's a great. Institution up there. Um, but if you dial that number, sometimes you get somebody. And sometimes it says enough, maybe donate person to the emergency room. That's not what somebody in crisis needs. They don't need to be told to go to the emergency room. A lot of these people don't have clarification for that. They need to be able to have somebody that's available. Police Department, every month they do a. Wrap of the calls that they made, correct me if I'm misleading anything, um, of how many mental health. Stops they made. For me, it would do. Service to this individual that's in a crisis and help the department have somebody that's able to lose training that field. Um, on an as-needed basis. To hire somebody at two hundred thousand, having to sit there. I think is a waste taxpayer money. But to have somebody that's willing. And take an as-needed basis position for us to see if we need to have it full term or if it's a waste. Um, I think for the town, when you're looking at uh finances, that's the way to go. And it's interest money through an art program, so it's not taxpayers' money. Whereas if we. Try to add somebody to the staff that's taxpayer money moving forward. Um, but you're right. Um, if that person wants to work out, we would be where we are today because then we should add to that vote. I would refer to anybody here, um. To to vote yes. Thank you.
Anyone else for the first time? Uh, I'm sorry, Dan. Go ahead. Name and address, please.
One question. I'm going to, I am fifty-three years old. I suffer from seizure. In. A life of work button on your neck. Why does it cost so much money for? Like older people. To pay for. Can the town maybe help out with that?
No.
Oh, Dan Ryan of Six Dollar Road. Sorry.
So that's that's not. That's not something that the town would be able to do.
Like, I mean, or maybe help out for them.
So what we're trying, well, Mrs. Maltesi.
There are programs associated with life alerts that we could help get those people.
Can't afford it. It's like a hundred dollars a month for a life alert. But I have seizures, so.
I'm I'm happy to give you my contact information. We can certainly, we'll get to that one for you and what kind of. Uh, and actions I have there for you.
Yeah, it's just. It's just. A lot in like older people. Yes, I I'm, I think I'm still kind of young, but I try, but. But like older people, I mean, it's just that that little button will save lives. And it's just, it's. I just think it's something that the town should look into. And by the way, I'm going to say one thing. East Windsor Police Department. They were at my house. And one officer. Came up to me and took me aside and gave me his card because I was having bad problems. He said. Mister Ryan, if you ever have a bad problem. Call me. You got to give it to the East Windsor Police Department. Some of the office guards. It was one just to talk to.
Thank you. Thank you for that feedback. I think we would all agree that the number one uh call for service that the police respond to should not be mental health. Uh, anyone else for the first time? Uh, yes, in the back.
And after this two hundred thousand dollar dues that they're proposing. Is that then going to be a yearly thing put on to the taxpayers for salary?
I think you may have come in late. That question was the first one that was answered. Uh, it's a pilot program. So it's uh the way a pilot program is structured is, once the trial period closes, the pro- program is up for review. Um, either we're going to determine that there is not a demand for service and we're going to. Mothball it, or we're going to determine that there is, and the voters will have to decide whether or not to include that in the budget after that.
Now, anybody that has done this type of program, I don't know whether they have any numbers on it. Do we have any idea of how long this two hundred thousand dollars will run for?
It's it.
Totally depends on how many calls are made.
It depends on how many referrals are made from community services to the third-party vendor. We have to, in order to even determine what the rate is, it needs to be put out for an RFQ. Uh, which we can't do until the the funding is in place and then the town selects. Based on the responses to that, when the money is depleted, the money is depleted. If that's in six months, it's over. If it's in five years, it's over.
But we have no idea of what their hourly rate is at this point.
No, that'll be uh subject to open competitive bid. Uh, anyone else for the first time? Yes, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Spencer, six zero. Um, I just want to say, concerned with the day going far, cared without considering the outcome. In addition, I feel we have several other immediate needs that could benefit from this league. Some of these questions I know about you answered, but how will success be measured? Number of seniors served, prices avoided, or cost savings? What is a long-term funding plan after the Harvard interest has run out? Are we willing to take that on when we've struggled so much with this current budget cycle? Have we thought of partnering partnering with nearby towns or regional agencies to reduce costs? How will residents be informed of these services so seniors don't fall through the cracks? How will proposed social workers coordinate with two-on-one to avoid duplication? And do we have two-on-one data like the number of senior fellows from East Windsor that would be used to show the need for this investment?
So I I think you have some prepared questions there and I didn't catch them. If you can hand them to Director Maltesi, she can address them uh point by point.
Well, like I said, so. How will successes be measured?
That's so we keep accurate notes and and uh data as to who comes in and asks for services based on their uh. Category, I guess you could say. So I know how many people come in for energy assistance, how many people come in. So. All of that data is kept within our office. Uh, we use Charity Tracker as our means of keeping all of our data and client notes. Uh, so all of that is ready to, then we can run status reports off of all of that. Um, I would say. To to define how a crisis is averted, uh, there could actually be a resource, uh, number one. How many times we need to follow up with them? Again, working with the person and the agency that we have to still send out to bid in this. And this whole plan needs to be put together for that.
Um, I'm going to skip the question about what would we do after it's run out. Um, have we thought of partnering with the town or regional agencies to reduce costs?
Yes. Yes.
And we're not?
So um, the town of Summers was approached about partnering with this prior to um the notion of it being a contracted position. The reason that that it's um attractive to us to do it as a contracted position and why it was prohibitive. To do it with the town of Summers is because of collective bargaining agreements. Um, and also um the benefits share associated with the uh employee. Because we don't have an existing bargaining unit position, we do not need to go through the collective bargaining process for this. So you can do a direct contracting. Um, and just an overhead basis. Um, so the town of Summers was approached. Um, they were, they. We have different bargaining units, we have different collective bargaining agreements, and that couldn't be reconciled. But the first thing. But the first thing that we tried to do was to do it on a regional basis. And actually, if you think of it from a contracted um basis versus a collective bargaining basis, this is actually a more modest step than if we were to bring the employee on on a uh permanent basis. That's something that we're not prepared to do at this point is to bring the employee on on a permanent basis until one of the benchmarks that's that's deliverable throughout the project would be to show um the number of calls over time, the types of calls over time, um and the outcomes of the calls over time. But the overtime piece is the 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 piece of the data that we need to establish. We can't do that without, a- and you know, I'm I'm very much in favor of this, but even I am hesitant to say this is what I'm going to add a new full-time, probably six-figure position um i- into the budget. That's just not that's not something you start with. You need to aggregate the data first, and that's what we're trying to get to is to be able to address what what the community services folks deem to be a need in the community um and that the the board agrees with, and be able to show what the impact of our involvement has been. You had a couple others, I think.
Social worker working in a two-on-one. And then uh do we have any two-on-one data on the senior calls?
We routinely, we routinely get data from two-on-one um when when we request it from them based on what the calls are. Typically, we ask them for um and uh data, which is the homeless uh conversion program that they have. So we ask them regularly for our hand data for the towns.
Anyone else for the first time? Mr. Sherry, name and address, please.
Jerry, People Street, Broadbrook. I don't know how, of this, I guess I'll just throw it out there. I voiced my opinion three weeks ago when this first came up. And um I know that this money isn't coming from the taxpayers, but yes, it is our money. This two hundred thousand dollars is our money. And I failed to see how a social worker at three in the morning is going to come and satisfy me if I have a problem. I know who will be there. Please fire apartment and the ambulance. I think that's where the money should be tunneled to. I think that they should, they can use that for improvements. A social worker is going to be a source for telephone numbers. I don't know what people think a social worker is going to achieve when they're called in the middle of the night, because I don't think they're going to come out, first of all. They work just like anybody else from eight to five, nine to five, whatever it is. So I I think personally that a part-time social worker is not going to fit the bill that you think, not me personally, but that the uh department thinks is going to handle it. I mean, you can go to the social services and they can hand you a phone number as easy as I and I can look it up. I've done it before. I've dealt with the state of Connecticut in social services. But I just think the two hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money. The trial and error of that, it's just, again, in my opinion, I don't think we're giving our money as good.
So at the chair, Bragado of the chair, I'll I'll share a story about my first three weeks in office. There was a a fire in Mill Pond Village. Uh, and all, there was a fire in Mill Pond Village my first month in office. And uh in addition to the fire departments and the ambulance and the police that did respond to that, um Melissa was was one of those who responded at three-thirty in the morning. Um, and she whipped out her phone and she made a whole bunch of phone calls, and before five AM she had found uh residents or or shelter housing for the forty-one displaced families.
Jason, point, Jason.
Yeah.
She was there. They were there and they did their job.
She was there. What if she's not?
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you. That's what we need.
Anyone first time uh in the back and then you sir in the front?
It's a name and nobody's asked the little question.
Saving you.
As presented in the North Central Health News, North Central Connecticut News. We've got two hundred grand that fell out of the sky, but thanks to him, those what happens in year three? When town has to put the bill, it's two hundred grand for this special employee that we talked about, all right? It's not going to come from nowhere. The Board of Finance would cut the throats at the end of the typical budget season to get that kind of money rolled back if they could. I don't think we vote this thing through, not by any stretch of the imagination. Franklin, the town doesn't need another employee at any time. Remember what Ronald Reagan said? I'm from Town Hall, I'm here to help you. Really don't think we need another one. It's been pointed out the services are very difficult. Purge people to spend this money for something tangible, something you can measure, something you can fingers enter. Probably a thousand things that a lot of people could name, but this money is, please. It's not because of the social work, we're going to respect the future of that tax problem.
This is, uh, you may not have heard the the previous answers on that. This is a pilot position. It's not hiring an employee. Um, and at the end of the funding, that that piloted contract goes away. It's not an additional employee.
You need the name and address.
Oh, that's built up one oh, one oh nine, uh, Melrose. Yes, ma'am.
Let's say Memorialia, Sixteenth Church Street. I'm thinking people, um, you're, you're an example of what happened and what it is. I just can't even help. You are able to get people who live in this, right? That's kind of taking care of the crisis. But clinical social workers do more than place people in different sites. The trauma that people face, the isolation that people are facing, particularly seniors right now. I believe that we have a mental health crisis in the United States and Connecticut in East Windsor. And I believe that a clinical social worker would only add to the support that people have. It's not just dealing with a crisis in a lot of cases. This is dealing with helping people over a period of time if I'm not safe.
Yes, in a case we
So it would be case management. Jason, I am in favor of this.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Los and then the young lady in the second row.
Bill Los, Forty-four Mall Road, Broadbrook. Been a member of the fire department for over sixty-nine years. We respond to over eight hundred calls a year. Right now, over seventy percent of our calls are for medical. There are all kinds of medical out there. We're the first ones on the scene most of the time. And we do send people out to other place people. You know, if you need something else, we'll tell you where to go. The ambulance is on the scene after to make people bring people to somewhere, hospital, wherever we need. So again, seventy percent of our calls, eight hundred calls a year, thirty percent are medical.
Thank you, sir.
Carol Moscow, Twelfth Church Street. What I'm hearing simply, perhaps would disagree with me, is that this is a proposal for proactive action as opposed to reactive action. Those are two very different things. Um, and I believe that this program that is being proposed would avoid some of the reactive things that we're hearing, needing to call out the fire departments of police, et cetera. So I do support this proposal.
Thank you, madam. For the first time?
Yes, Scott Warren, one oh six South Main Street. Um, thank you to everybody that serves in total position, paid or not paid. I appreciate your time and your efforts because I've served on many boards and commissions myself. Um. I do believe this is a good cause and a good thing. However, based on boards and commissions I've been on, when you have a pilot program, when you have something that's paid for, when it comes to the future, you have to decide what's going to happen, whether it's paid or not paid. We tend to either not have it funded and it goes away, which now people are used to the service, it's gone. And now they're asking, why is it there? And I think that when we have other entities that are going to take care of it on the private side, I think we should stick with that. So I'm going to vote for no. But just wanted to put that out there and let everybody know how it is.
Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Rick La Marius. Sixteen Church Street. I'm going to speak from personal experience dealing with elderly brother who was totally disabled for many years. And the difficulty, even when he had an advocate like me and his children, how difficult it was for us to learn the systems and to interface with social social services at different levels. Uh, working through initial disability claims, working through trying to get some home health care. Uh, if it were not for the hours and hours and days, days that I and his children advocated for him, he would have years before he left his own home, he would have years before been in a nursing home on a permanent basis. He, because because we got a little bit lucky, actually, because I ran into one social worker at the state after dealing with multiple social workers, I ran into one social worker that helped and went over backwards to find us an avenue for him to get the care that he needed and the assistance that he needed. Other than that, it was a nightmare to navigate and if we can provide some little assistance, it can make such a difference in someone's life. My brother, if he had, if he was here in East Windsor and he had no relatives nearby, there would have been no hope for him. Not only would he have gone to a nursing home, he would have died years before he did. So I think this is a wonderful effort. I think it's important to see where it takes us. Fortunately, we have the funding that we can use that doesn't damage the local taxpayer, and I think we should pursue this step. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for the first time?
Yeah, me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you had one.
The way it goes. Paul Anderson, eighty-nine Main Street, Broadbrook. Okay. We live in a town that's an aging population, can't be denied. You look at the student population, it's pretty small compared to where it has been. You look at the age demographics in this town, and the number of older people is growing steady basis because we refuse to leave the town. We're staying here. This is going to be very important to a lot of people. And you can stop talking about all the crisis baloney because that's not the issue. That is always handled and it always has been handled. It's everything else. I'm working with an elderly person in another town right now, helping him get to the end of his life. And I will tell you that the cooperation you get from most agencies is pretty poor. There is too much to do, it's complicated, and whatever you want to do, you can search the web. When you do that, you're going to say, well, I need the Connecticut version of this, and it's all controlled by the legislature. And the paperwork goes on and on and on. So just looking at things like probate, I have thirty-seven forms that I had to download to see which ones are appropriate. It goes on and on and on. Who's going to help you? Nobody. You can forget about all the other baloney you're talking about with the police and the fire. They handle the emergencies. This is not an emergency. It's just very, very difficult, frustrating, and it ruins somebody's life trying to get something simple done that is made complicated, and with a professional, you got a chance. So I say absolutely. You're looking at the interest on money that came to the town. You're not even looking at the principal. And it's a try it out to find out if it works and if we need it. And you can say no, and then you don't even find out, and you're staying in the dark. Don't stay in the dark. Say yes.
Thank you, sir. Other public comment? Go ahead.
Yes, um.
Name and address, please. Name and address, Nicole.
Hold the cell at fifty-three Hospital. Uh, there are professionals that do handle this already. As a Medicare agent, my services are free. So yes, for Medicare, you're talking about people over sixty-five, and those are generally the people that need it more. We have access to everybody that takes care of that, and it's for free. For the people over fifty-five and sixty-four, there are services out there. You just have to reach out. I can even help with that, and it's for free. So everything people need is already accessible for free. And also, I have one more question. Since I know it's a pilot, what happens if, um, now, is this going to be the last chance that the town has a say in this? So if the town said yes, and you decide that you want it, but the town doesn't want to spend the money anymore, do we have another say, or is this it?
I don't think I understand your question. Can you say that a different way?
What happens at the end of pilot program?
The program sunsets.
Yeah, I'm asking for clarification on the procedure of that. Does it get voted? Or is it something that only the Board of Selectmen will vote on?
No, so I I think I've answered this, but I'll I'll do it again because I understand your question now. Um, at the end of the pilot program, at the end of the pilot funding, the program sunsets, at which point, through the normal budget process, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, town voters, there would be a discussion as to whether or not to continue it. Uh, but I think I think that's the most direct way to answer your question, if I understand it.
I moved the paper. I just want to pass it through. We already have it for free.
So can I ask a question? So I I don't understand what free and what service she's referring to. So if I have a mental health issue and I need somebody to come and sit with me and to help me, I can call you and you'll send somebody to my house and meet up with me for free?
That's crisis. That's different. Crisis is already, it's already been crisis.
No, I want, I want to avoid, you have to go to the hospital. I want to be able to have somebody calm, calm me down, walk me through that, you know, world not
That's crisis. That's, that's
Also, because it goes, it starts, starts from here and progressively gets worse. If you're just saying, I call you free, you'll tell me to call C H R, I don't need that. Um, so I don't know what you mean by free. Um.
I don't know what you mean by you want somebody to come sit.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and ask that if there's going to be a back and forth, that we have that conversation maybe offline um afterwards.
And if there's a free service offer somewhere, what that free is, if we're going to make a, I think it would be, I don't think I'll change my mind because nothing like free.
Um, so uh
Want to make a motion for the question.
Oh, sorry. Uh, motion is made by uh Noreen. Is there a second? Uh, all in favor of motion, uh, moving the question?
I am opposed.
Okay, um, so so the the chair is not in doubt. The question has
Second.
Sure.
You gotta give me a couple minutes. I think this is what's Okay, okay. So Mike moved for paper ballots. Hold on.
Seconded by Scott.
That, okay, got and seconded.
Vote on the most
Vote, vote.
Is it, is it half or two-thirds?
What happened?
Okay.
So motion's been made and seconded to have the vote conducted by paper ballot. All in favor of conducting the vote by paper ballot, please say aye. I'm sorry. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Okay, the chair is not in doubt. Motion carries. Paper ballot will be ordered.
Okay. What? Do you have a word? No, but you have one ready. I mean, ninety percent of this, I don't know. She is not a resident. He asked if he's not a resident. And he asked if he's not a resident.
Oh.
She told.
If we run up.
Oh, that could be a couple minutes. I don't certainly not.
Starting the line, I'm sorry.
Well, starting the line, you wouldn't be first in the hallway because that's where.
Yeah, they have to be a property owner. Oh, we're still.
Keep blocking the door.
You don't forget to turn the recording back on.
All right, the town meeting having concluded its business, I'll reconvene in the meeting of the board of selectmen. We'll take up agenda item 9A, discuss and approve the elderly commission bylaws as written to include Ruth Ann Lanzner and I believe Melissa Maltes. So Ruth Ann, you're the new chairman of the elderly commission, is that correct?
Yes.
How are things going?
Wonderful. No, actually they are. We have a great team. They're energetic, they're optimistic, they're full of ideas and it's wonderful. There's myself as chair, Carol Muska is the vice chair, Richard Ross is our secretary, and we have Randy Clifton and Ron Stam. We're re-establishing the elder commission, elderly commission, I was correcting. And we've only have three meetings as of June as a new commission and we developed our vision statement, we have bylaws, I don't know if you have copies of the bylaws?
No.
I can pass them out. And we begin discussion on what we thought would benefit our seniors. And we're now going to include 55 and plus. So like to be the commission that's serving a population who needs a voice. And so we have the bylaws to review and sign.
So let me start by asking questions. The elderly commission, as previously constituted, had these bylaws as a frame of reference, is that right?
Okay, let's say yes, they did.
Okay, and the newly impaneled elderly commission has made some changes to it. Are there changes beyond the age of 55 and older?
We haven't put an age in there. There are no changes to the bylaws. Formerly, all the commission did was adjust the age of those eligible for to come with customer services to 55.
And is that a model that we're seeing places? So has the commission approved these?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we approved them at our August meeting.
Okay.
And everybody approved them. So we just, I've looked at the past minutes of the past elderly commission and a lot of their concerns are the same that we'll be addressing or looking at things that they want to do or things that they want to see, things that we think they need interested in having an approach to.
And things like what, can you give some examples?
Just talking about different things like seniors feeling safe, being able to be part of the community, you know, encouraging them to be part of the community. And how this, how they can, they can help us, well, us, I mean, we can help younger people as well. And then bringing the fifty-five bringing in the younger seniors.
So the commission, as I understand it, plays some role in the general program offerings that the senior services provides, is that right?
Yes.
And if you're taking a younger, if you're expanding it to include a younger population, which I think is fantastic. What are the types of things that you guys may consider suggesting for offerings?
On the younger, we've, we've come up with a hiking, a hiking group.
That's awesome.
And there are several of them, I think, that have already done it through Ellington, I think it's through Ellington. They've done it and they're kind of excited to get it started here. We have one coming, I think it's October. But it's October to go to Northwest Park. It's like, I think it's a three mile hike and it's a suburb that is around Northwest Park. So anybody that feels that they can do it, plus all of the younger seniors. We're just trying to get them involved. Knowing that there's things for them to do as well. It's not just old seniors.
Yeah, and I think there's a great opportunity between your reinvigorated commission and the new location at the community center to do exactly that. I think that's what collectively our hope had been to see. Just looking at some of the program offerings that that are being offered in September, I mean, there's some stuff that I want to go to.
Yeah.
A presentation on Einstein and, you know, his theory of relativity. I mean, that's like, that's very interesting.
Yes.
There's the Big E trip, there, there were two other ones of note that I included in my call last week that I thought were like, they struck me as things that we have not done before. And is that, is that, I'm going to give you an opportunity to 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 horn a bit, but is that a representation of what the elderly commission has done? Is that a representation of the new space allocations? Is that?
I think it's both. Tom and I attended a focus group that Shawna Tustin leads. And these, they were all excited about getting things done and doing things and things that they'd like to do. And I think opening it up to younger seniors to see what's there for them and having the new community center because I noticed in the past minutes, people were saying that they felt uncomfortable or they didn't feel safe about getting into the senior center over the fire department. And now that they have a safe place to get into, it's easy access, it's wonderful.
Yeah, there's not a step to be followed in that business.
No, and the thing of it is, the things that we've been going there for. There's a lot of people and there seems to be more and more people in a large room. Just doing things like they had music bingo and they do, I don't know what they do, but I want to go play. It's, it's amazing. They're, they're having fun, they're socializing, they're not sitting at home by themselves. And I think having the elderly commission, we can try to do more of that. And just by word of mouth, getting some of these people out of their homes, even if it's only for a couple of hours. And it's great that they have the buses. So I think just resurrecting, reestablishing the elderly commission and keeping it going. And encouraging population as, you know, as Paul had mentioned is we have an older population in East Windsor.
Yeah, on that point, you know, I haven't shared this widely, but new state data came out. And I used to say that East Windsor is 10% older than Hartford County, which I think is a pretty compelling statistic and justification for why focuses on services, the benefit, the senior population are justified. The new statistics show that we are actually 20% older than the state average. We're 20% older, so if the state average is 40 years old, the average age in East Windsor is, I think, forty-nine. That's telling in terms of where we direct the resources that we have available.
Yeah, we were kind of, one of our things on our agenda is to establish a, possibly a name change and with the charter revision coming up, it would probably be a good time, just so that because it's elderly commission, I feel like I should be pushing a blocker, a tax policy. And I think our our older population is a lot more active and I think it would keep them healthier and they'd live longer as well.
So what is the proposed?
We haven't, that's on our agenda.
Nice, okay.
To come up with a a name that's age appropriate for fifty-five and above.
Questions or comments for?
Um, so Ruth Ann, that was my, my first thing was the name. Because I'm a senior, but I'm hopeful I'm never elderly, but I know I will be someday, but I don't want to, nobody wants to think about that. We hopefully will stay healthy and not consider ourselves to be elderly. I don't think you need to do charter revision to change the name. In fact, I think in the bylaws, you could say you'll be known as the senior commission, you know, also known as the elderly commission or something like that. You could probably do that. And, and promote yourselves as a different name, saying your bylaws, that's the other name you'll use, even though you're technically the elderly commission.
Have a DBA.
DBA, exactly, right. Commission DBA. And then the other, the other second thought I had was, you know, commissions are usually not, they're not committees, they're commissions. And I think of a commission as being somewhat independent and having some not advisory rights. Like the ability to file for grant applications or the ability to make decisions about spending funds. And I think you've made yourselves in these bylaws entirely advisory, but then you might as well be a committee. And since you're a charterer commission, I think perhaps you might want to think about what you might want to do that's independent of advisory. I'm not saying you're going to have the right to go wild. But within the framework of what you do, I think the commission should have some independence to be able to do things. And I just want to correct, correct a few things. You have in here, of course, that the commission serves the, the board of selectmen. But you also have here that under section two-one, the last, the last sentence that says that the commission shall operate as an advisory capacity with specific responsibility, providing recommendations to the first selectman. Concerning community programs and services for senior citizens. And it's not the first selectman, it serves the board's selectmen for policy decisions. And I think that should be clarified. Because I wanted me, as a, as a member of the board and not the first selectman, I want to make sure that the commission serves the entire, not advisory, just the first selectman. And that also comes up in three-one. It says the commission serves as advisory body to the first selectman. Doesn't say to the board of selectmen. And so I think there should be consistent in here that the commission is advisory to the board of selectmen. And it's nothing wrong with saying that, like, for example, that the appointments shall be made by the board of selectmen with consultation with the first selectman, no problem with that, because the first selectman may have ideas about it. But this is really a board that serves the town and, and, and communicates with the board of selectmen in terms of the bylaws. So I'm really happy that it's being resurrected because, you know, my wife and I plan our days around, we're still working, but we plan our days around being healthy. By walking, going to the gym, exercising and watching our diet, et cetera. We, our lives are planned around being healthy. And we want to have, we want to be able to do that as we grow older. And knock on wood, you know, we can stay healthy as long as possible. And these sorts of programs allow all of us that are, that are aging to be able to find programs and also to meet people and to make it a social thing too. So I'm really happy with it. I think I could see my wife and I attending your events and participating and I hope other people in town will know about it and will also see it as a valuable resource. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Can I ask on anything? Do you see what other things are available for the elderly in town? Like, I was always under the impression that once this got started, that you would be working hand in hand with parking record for programs and stuff. But I know Park Health has programs that they could grant money for, they do things, the warehouse point library are doing stuff both for elderly and younger. And a few couple of churches in town have opened up, you know, a different kind of thing. Is there any thought process to get together and maybe you could do something collaborative with everybody? Because it seems like everybody is pieced around and bring them all together.
I think the warehouse point library is going, bringing books in.
Oh, okay, so you are doing that. All right, good.
Yeah.
Okay, I. Okay.
Also fill the library and then as the tech time program, she's going to be probably.
That was wonderful.
Tech time.
Good. Thank you. I just didn't know what you guys were doing because I don't have, I hope so the day, do what I have to do. So thank you for that. And I would agree with what gentlemen at the end said about changing to the board. And I disagree that you don't have any funding with this yet. So you are advisory because you can't just spend money that you don't have in your budget. So that might be something you want to look in, move aboard to get some type of funding for the elderly commission or something. That's just me.
I think we're meeting something about some sort of what we need for a budget. At some point, we'll have to put that on our agenda.
Through it later.
It's, it's going to get filled up really quickly because we keep coming up with more ideas about the agenda. Agenda keeps getting larger and larger.
But I, but I know when they first started the concerts up at Park, a lot of the elderly were coming out because they didn't have transportation and they didn't know how to get there. So once that was surfaced, they're getting there now and it's nice to see them because it gives them a whole new perspective on things. They're not depressed anymore like they were so many people that I'm familiar with. So through those for you guys doing that.
Well, sir, anything?
Just thank you for your work. It's nice to see some new blood and some new ideas and thank you.
Agreed. Thank you so much. This is long overdue and it's really great to see that you guys are picking this up and taking it in a good direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lancer. This gentleman. Kirsten Jensen, are you with us?
I am, yes. Thank you for having me. I'm Kirsten Jensen with M7 Ride, so on behalf of Jeremy Scalcy to present tonight.
So I, I think Jeremy has some communication with Melissa Maltessi, our community services director. I swapped a couple of emails and I think I had a phone call with him. But can you give a general overview as to what this hold harmless and license agreement is intended to do and why?
Sure. So just by way of background, we are the operator of the Greater Hartford Transit District Link program. So this is a DOT pilot program backed by a state grant to provide affordable micro transit rides. So a ride sharing service that's on demand within the service areas. So currently the GHTD link provides the service through East Windsor and Enfield with the the goal to provide access to community to work medical appointment schools, also as a feeder into the Hartford area public transit. So we've been, been running this program. It's been quite successful and as part of a way to better and more efficiently serve the community of East Windsor, primarily and through Enfield. We are looking to expand the fleet to include beyond just the sedans that can hold up to four passengers. We are looking to include a Ford three fifty transit van, which can almost double the ridership for that vehicle. And so the approach was being able to keep the vehicle up in the East Windsor area for efficiency and operational purposes, rather than having it stationed either in M7 in West Haven or in the Hartford area. And so we had approached the, the town to see if there was a place that we could park it. So with the idea of having a place to leave the vehicle up so it was easily accessible and would be able to be put on the road right off the hop in the morning. We were looking for the ability to just essentially have a hold harmless. So we would park it right there behind the building you were all sitting in. And then our driver would be able to pick it up and then log right in and be able to start providing rides to the community right there. So the just being kind of swimming at your own risk for us, knowing that at least it's a town building so that there will be people around. And there will be eyes on it, but for the most part, we are just looking to park it safely, but with no liability from East Windsor's perspective.
I don't have an issue with that, generally speaking. I actually, I appreciate the notion that it more quickly delivers services to people in our area. The one concern that I would raise and it's something that we can be we can work on as the, the months go along, if this is approved, is when we have to plow. And that is in inclement weather, it becomes a challenge to move vehicles so that the plows can get around them. And I know I'm, I'm looking at my public works director who's, who's given me the business here and I'm sure that we're going to want to make sure that we can get you out of the way.
Certainly, and, and I, that was something that, that came up in internal discussions. And so, you know, I do appreciate that that is kind of on the radar and hopefully we can work through what to do in those instances. We'll, we'll be able to, I think, work with you on, on making that happen or whatever the contingency plan is for preparedness.
Questions or comments?
I just had a couple of questions. Are you, are you folks profit for profit or nonprofit?
So generally, our, our business, we are a for-profit business. But we are operating, you know, this arm as the through this micro share or micro transit grant program. So yeah, we are for-profit. We have our own insurance on the vehicles.
Does the, do the riders, are they paying for the service or is this part of the grant where they get the rides paid for by the grants?
Yeah, so the rides are essentially really kind of grant subsidized. So it's three dollars per trip. Children under two ride free. And so it's just, yeah, three dollars a trip anywhere in the service area. So heavily, heavily reduced rate to be able to do that.
Are people going to be assembling, arriving at like the town hall to get on the ride in the morning? So that'd be like, you know, you've come here to town hall to get on the, on the ride and then out and then they drop them off back here. Are people going to be picked up and dropped off from the town hall?
Nope. So this is, you know, kind of akin to your, I don't want to say your Uber lift, right? Because we're, we're just staying from them. But it is, you pick your location of where you want the pickup to be. So whether you're home, if you're at the grocery store. What the algorithm does, which is backed by a company called RideCo, is it will search around for the closest drivers. And then it finds other rides and so it's able to pick up and drop off people along the way. So as far as whether this is kind of akin to a bus stop, that's not how it operates. So it would just simply be where the driver initially logs on and then the system will start to build kind of the, the living manifest of ridership throughout the day. And then would just essentially come back to, you know, tuck it in at night and then start the day over the next day.
I just would say to the board, I just would be concerned that, that we don't have people meeting for the ride or being dropped off at the ride at the town hall because we don't have facilities for people to be hanging around, waiting for other rides to come pick them up, et cetera. So as long as it's understood that this is not going to be like a, like a node or a meeting point for people to, to get their rides. I could see somebody saying, hey, I want to ride somewhere, you know, we'll meet you there at the, I mean, I assume we don't want to have people assembling here or getting dropped off here in the parking lot behind the building because we just don't have a facilities for people.
I think it's pretty clear. It's not how it works though, right?
Well, she said it's like, it's like a taxi. Well, she said it's like a it's like a taxi. I looked it up just now. It's like a taxi um system. So and they and it's like Uber.
And they said they have a pickup and a drop off point, but it's not here.
Well, it could be here. Somebody says, where are you gonna be in the morning? I'm gonna, I want to start my ride here. I'll get on the bus here. That's all. Or on the vehicle here.
Micro transit, uh, so personally disappeared out of my screen, but um the um the micro transit um. Grant funding, how much longer is that in place?
That's through April.
Okay.
And then, you know, given the success, we would be pushing for extension. Um, but currently the it the it ends in April, April of twenty six. So I mean, we are currently operating in the in the region. I mean, we we've been having our sedans um. And we also do wheelchair accessible vans as well. Um, what the intent with this is just having a a larger capacity to be able to. Um, be more efficient and and picking people up, especially in delivering to the the kind of more of the feeder locations. Um, so I mean, we are currently traveling around um as it stands. It's just being able to kind of operate more efficiently with a a larger vehicle, one larger vehicle.
Yep.
She and so I was just gonna ask a similar question when she basically answered that they're operating now. This is just a larger vehicle. So I'm good. Thanks.
Yeah, they started this program uh in March of twenty three or twenty four. Twenty four. Um, it uh it initially served Milpon Village and Park Hill and portions of of Main Street Broadbrook. Um, and what and provided very subsidized transportation to different locations and I think only Enfield, right?
Yes.
But it's it's been expanded. Um, so. What I have heard about the program in terms of of the metrics associated with it, it's been very, very well received and very well utilized. So. I would be really interested to see it extend extended again.
Just.
I'm sorry, Director Norton.
Would be possible to park the vehicle at the community center. We have. Over there, there's already buses there.
Is it cameraed? It is, right?
I believe so.
So when we initially had this conversation, uh. The cameras at the community center have been installed on the outside of the building. They have sense been installed on the outside of the building. So that is certainly a possibility and would fit our fleet. Uh.
Oh, yeah.
To also be able to park it on the side of the parking lot like we do our senior buses for plowing in the winter. Um. That would solve both of those problems.
That's right.
Should I don't see like a better option?
But the program is good, in my opinion, because we don't have any bus services. Um. And a lot of the people that utilize this three dollars to get here to Enfield, that's a whole lot cheaper than having to get somebody um. That expects not only you to pay for the taxi or the Uber, but also put a tip on top of that. So. Um, I think it's a much needed service. So um. But I agree, the community center probably is a better spot than park at this point.
We just didn't have cameras up there. And I will just piggyback and say that I'm full supporting this program because we have a number of teams where. If we're able to take them to their appointment for whatever reason, we now have a backup plan for that. We're able to connect them to an additional resource, which is what our job is. Um, and also they were able to bring uh people to us this year to pick up their holiday turkeys and hams. Those that don't. So we had a number of people come up, pick up their turkeys and hams during the holiday season, as well as come back in the Christmas season to give up their toys for their children. Um, so it's utilized in a number of facets across.
Um, Kirsten, if we were to to change the location from town hall to the community center, does that still work for you guys?
Um, I have to check with the team, but I'm I mean, based on um, you know, the the security level is is still the same. And it sounds like logistics as far as even access for us um and the ability for for public works to plow. It seemed like it would be reasonable. Just for my edification, what do we um, where's that location in comparison to where you are currently?
It's twenty eight Abbey Road.
Okay.
It's on the the southern edge of of town.
Okay.
Right along Route five.
Okay.
Twenty eight.
Forty eight.
Twenty eight, okay. Yeah, I I mean, without committing, like I said, I have to bring it back to to the team, but I I don't see why that wouldn't be a an issue whatsoever. Um.
So if I ask the board to grant me authority to sign the whole harmless agreement with that uh parcel. Um, a- as our our designated parking area for this, um, you could let me know. And then I could, um, if you if you guys are amenable, I can sign off on the whole harmless.
Sure, I will follow up with you um tomorrow.
So if there's no further discussion um amongst the board or for Ms. Jensen. Um, I'd ask for a motion to authorize my signature on the whole harmless and license agreement with the edit to include uh twenty eight Abbey Road.
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
opposed? Joe Carey.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. You guys have a wonderful evening.
You too. Okay, um, next charter revision. Um, we are mandated by our charter um to do a charter revision process once every five years. This is that five year period. Um, we have the funding in place. Um, so what I did is I looked back on the process five years ago um and emulated that. I also worked with um Holman to give a little cheat sheet on the back of the attachment, which shows how the um charter revision process proceeds. Um, so I have the a draft um resolution establishing a commission with a draft charge. Um, and establishing the number of members. Um, the next thing would be is we would have thirty days to fill the members um after we impanel the commission. Um, questions or comments on this?
What's the what's the process for um notifying the public that we're doing this and inviting them to become members of the commission?
We can do an email blast, do what?
I mean, I think it's I understand it's seven members. It could be up to, I think, whatever it's at fourteen or twelve. It's a it's a little bit, seven is a little bit few, but I I can I I could agree to to that. However. People need to know about it so that they can apply and then we can go through the applications if there's more than seven and vote on it, which is what we're gonna do.
That's what happened last time.
Right. But I I think if we don't publicize it, then folks are gonna complain and say they didn't know that the commission was um starting. Um, oh, yeah, an email blast. It may be some other, maybe something on the town website saying the charter review commission is um. Starting its its work and if you want to make an application to join the commission, you could submit it. Um. And I think the scope is broad enough here. Um. Now, I'm good with this, so I'm gonna vote in favor of it.
Other questions or comments? Uh, then may I ask for um a motion to adopt the resolution as presented?
Make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Mr. Norton. How are you? I had an opportunity for you to get out of here way sooner.
Went checked my mail. Had timing.
I needed something that was good. So I was like, where's Lynn?
But I could have done it in four minutes. I'm gonna try and do it in three and a half. I have. Six vehicles.
Thank you.
Just sitting in my yard, collecting dust and weeds.
Would be the town garage you're referring to?
Yes, it's town garage. And I would like to dispose of them or get rid of them. Excuse me. Um, I have a few options. The last time we did like a our own auction and I was lambasted on Facebook, so we're not doing that again. Um, well. We are going to either. Go to, I think my original thing will be to probably try and go to Southern Auto. Just have if we can, some of them don't run, we we can get them there. There is another, there is another option. There's a municipal bid, it's called. Where they uh, this is what they do. Um, I would just like the group to agree. To let me find what I think is the best option and have the first selectmen just say, yeah. Good.
I don't like that idea.
Okay, then just let me make the decision and I'll just do what I think is best.
What what is what is Muni bid? I don't know what that one is. Tell me about that.
It's it's uh, it's used nationwide. You you I haven't come. The reason I'm using them as an alternative alternative to uh Southern Auto, I haven't really scoped the whole thing out yet. But I know a lot of the surrounding towns use them. And basically you get a a contact person, you tell them what you have. Um, I think they have local people that'll come out, take pictures, do the whole nine yards. And then they'll they'll post it on their website that, you know. Here's what we have. We'll put a base bid amount and uh.
Like, it sounds like a municipal vehicle version of eBay. Is that fair to say?
Yeah.
Um, and if we were opting to run it through Southern Auto, do we get to establish a base bid?
No, we get what they give us.
That sounds less good.
Well, that's why.
You know, we have, there's you can see there's there's two cars. There's one uh dump truck.
Yeah, there's there's some high value.
And and we have a sweeper. I mean, we were using that sweeper up until this year. It's. It it's not a bad piece of equipment. I I think we could do better. And Muni bid. Some town that may want it than, you know, five hundred dollars to send it to South Africa or something, wherever the hell they go. So that's. I mean, I'll just use Muni bid. If that, I mean, I'm good with that. We'll just.
I'm comfortable with Muni bid. Um, can I ask why? And we, you know, I didn't talk about this ahead of time, so I'm I'm.
I know.
Just hold. Um, but why wouldn't we just go through the same process? I I thought my recollection is that we established a policy specifically to handle stuff like this. Um, that was two, three years ago, though.
It did.
Um. I think it was before this board was sat, if I'm not mistaken, because I remember Charlie having reasons about. Um, why wouldn't we just go through that process? Is it because it's it's labor intensive internally?
Well, that's part of it.
Okay.
That's part of it. And we will be accused of not being transparent. I'm sorry, it it's.
You're not wrong.
I get I'm sorry. I'm not on Facebook, but people tell me what people say about me. So I don't want people talking about me.
Take it with a grain of salt. That's a right, Duke.
I don't know what it's like to get mentioned on Facebook.
And the um.
I don't think I'm as popular as you are on it, but.
Few people are.
Lynn, the Southern Auto is, are they doing, are they setting it up for people to bid or are they just offering a price for it?
No, no, it'll it'll run through their auction. It'll it'll run through one of their lanes. And uh, we we've sent equipment there before. Um, you don't get a lot of money. I mean, you get some money and I I'm okay doing that too, honestly.
The problem, the problem is, I recall, I I also um hear what Jason said. I. You you know, I think there was a legitimate concern a long time back. That uh people that work for the town were buying these vehicles without them going out to bid. And so the the this board discussed it and decided that there was gonna be a practice of transparency and the and it was gonna be bid open to the public. And anyone, including employees, could bid and so be open to the public. And if you were gonna advertise it somewhere and. Maybe advertise it on Facebook or maybe advertise it on the town webpage, but the whole point was it was gonna be advertised. The the problem with Southern Auto advertisements is that no one in town knows about Southern Auto. The only people that know are people that buy and sell cars. And.
That would be dealers, yeah.
Dealers. And so people that like live in town that want to bid on it wouldn't even know it's being bid. Cause and the same thing with the Muni bid. Okay, I'm good with Muni bid as long as we post on our website where we're supposed to. That we have surplus vehicles that are going to be sold. And if anyone wants to bid on them, here's the link to go to bid on them. So that way the public knows about these vehicles. Cause I think people in the community, whether they're business owners or individuals. Should know that their town is selling vehicles and should have a right to bid on it, particularly residents and business owners in the community, first and foremost. And then everyone else. And then we get the highest bid, you know, hopefully, whatever the process is. So I I think it's it's um, it's gotta go out to bid. I think that's our policy. I know that that was policy adopted by the selectmen. And it's gotta be notified, people have to be notified that it's going out to bid on our town website or somewhere. As long as that happens, I'm I'm personally okay with it, whether it's Southern Auto or Muni bid, as long as everyone knows it's happening and they can participate if they choose to.
You have, do you have um an idea of of what you think are fair values for these vehicles?
I don't have it on the top of my head, but yes.
But you do have, yes, in your possession. Okay.
Yes.
Um. I do wish we had talked about this earlier because I think Deputy Chief Murphy has need of one of these. Yeah, um. What what would you assume the value is of the senior bus?
You don't need to make a decision. They've been sitting there for a while.
Well, you have to. Uh, you know, I mean, it it could have been out of here two hours ago. So um.
Thank you for.
What? If you know off the top of your head, what what would you assume the value on the the senior bus to be? There is there value left in that or is that junked?
Not a lot.
Okay.
Not a lot. A thousand dollars, probably.
So if the town were were to opt to use that instead of running it through an auction to use it for emergency training. Would that be something that that would?
Take it. Just as long as it leaves my yard, I don't care where it goes.
And as a town vehicle.
As a matter of fact, if anybody here would like me to deliver one to your yard. I'd be happy to do it.
The Muni bid take a portion of the proceeds? Like, is it a for profit?
Again, I I'm sure.
I just looked it up. No, they don't. I don't know how they make their money.
I haven't had it right now. Be to, I'm a little busy, so I haven't. I probably shouldn't even be here tonight. I. I was in the office. I said, gee, I should talk about this. And the more I the more I had to do other things, I. Ran out the door with this tonight, went home, moved my lawn, and here I am. Um, so. I'm flexible. I just want them gone.
Yeah. Other other comments, thoughts, observations?
I don't know. I personally don't have an issue with us following the policy that we established, seeing that there hasn't been any issues with it.
Okay, if we were to decide to surplus one, though.
Hmm. We have.
Well, actually, there's a there is a process for this because the the PD surpluses vehicles to the town garage all the time. All we would be doing is is inverting this. We'd just be going back.
I mean. Our sweeper?
No, they they don't want the sweeper.
Well, no, I mean, the sweeper, only anybody really wants a sweeper, except maybe another municipality or or a contractor.
Right. So how about how about this? If we were to uh follow the the uh vehicle disposal policy. Um, after setting a minimum bid and if there were not adequate bids to meet the minimum threshold, we then take those and run them through Muni bid.
Okay. Sounds fair.
While you're here, I just want to take a second to recognize the really great work that you have been doing over the last few months. Um, for those of you who don't know, uh, Len has successfully put out to bid um the Connectivity Grant Project, which is going to be. Uh, we think is gonna start the middle of the month. Um, at the same time, um, the uh waterline project that we got funded through CIF and CDS. Um, that that project in itself is Herculean, um, because it's it's marrying EPA, DPH, DECD, DOT. And Connecticut Water. Um, that is not an easy thing to do. I just want to thank you because you really have been killing it. I I appreciate it.
And the box culverts may be going soon too, because I had a meeting today with. So and the DOT, so. We got a few little things we gotta tweak, but.
How is the um? All the um, slides that are up around Perry Lane, is that for the sidewalks or is that for something else?
It's gotta be something else whereabouts.
All over Perry Lane from the beginning to the end, there's little red flags and then it's markings on the road. People are asking, what are they doing? And I find all.
Because our our sidewalk, there's already a sidewalk.
No.
Everything, we're not going down Perry Lane. I don't know. So, oh. could be fiber, they might be doing some fiber work. WPCA, uh, they called me and wanted to know if they, if they had to, uh, uh, post a tree that they want to cut down that's hanging over their pump station. But I, they wouldn't be going that far up and down.
No, they're, they're like, most of the street has got little flags and markings on the road.
A lot of times we're the last to know. Somebody will be digging in the road and it's like, what are you doing?
So we'll follow up on the vehicle disposal.
Yep.
Again, thanks, thanks for, yeah, for over the last few months. It's been awesome.
Thank you. Next time I'll wait to check my mail.
Chris Tots, good morning.
Detailed information of what. I'm hopefully going through this way in about two minutes or less. Um.
Missed last words?
Yeah. Yeah. Back in 2023, legislation was passed that changed the way assessors value motor vehicles for tax and purposes. And we've talked about this a couple of times. Um, the initial grand list for 24 started off using MSRP prices with an initial 15% depreciation on new vehicles. And then an additional 5% off each year for 15 years leveled off at 15%. Um, once people started finalizing their grand lists, they discovered that, um, their, their motor vehicle list had decreased drastically. Um, this was all over the state. In the spring, new legislation was passed that changed, that gave towns the option of not using the original, starting at 15% depreciation down to 15, uh, 85% depreciation after 15 years. And towns can now choose to start off with 90% of the MSRP for the new vehicles or 10% depreciation. And going down at, down to 80% depreciation or 20% of the MSRP. Um, we did not implement the alternative schedule because we did have a pretty healthy grand list this year. Um, I would like now, I think it would be prudent for the town before we start our 25 grand list to opt to adopt the alternative schedule from this point forward, from 25 forward. Um, in order to do that, basically the legislative body has to vote in favor of doing so, and then the municipality has to notify OPM that they have chosen the alternative schedule for the current and future grand lists. Yes.
So to do a comparison, where is East Windsor on this list?
East Windsor is not on that list because we did not implement the new schedule. A hundred and six, approximately a hundred and six out of 169 towns have implemented the new schedule.
So Grant, if you're looking for comparables, see what the impact would be for us. Uh, Granby is a good one. Portland's a good one. Uh, Summers is a good one. And you're looking at somewhere around 10, 11 million dollars on the grant.
I'd be more what it affects it's going to have on the residents because I know Enfield right now, everything you read it. Like being on East Windsor page, um, we have nothing good to say about their increase in their tax bills and they went up 40% on their tax.
Unfortunately, this is not, this has been an ongoing issue in Enfield for the last couple of years.
But I'm just like, as, I don't want to compare Enfield to us by what I'm saying. I don't want to say, you know, we're going to go to the next phase and it's a 40% increase on people's vehicle taxes.
Okay. Basically, the assessed value of vehicles will not change for the coming year. They'll stay at the same rate that they were this year. And what the mill rate does, we'll have to foresee what effect it'll have on the bills. Um, using our 24 grand list, the total difference had we implemented the new schedule would have been, um, approximately 151,900 additional tax revenue.
I get the tax revenue. Yeah. We also, I would like to weigh the tax revenue benefit versus what it's going to do. Are we going to be able to collect vehicle taxes if people can't afford to pay them? That's my concern.
Yep. We have to keep in mind, we're going to lose the gravel pit solar assessed value that was the, the nice boosting factor this past year. That's going away. We will be receiving the payment in lieu of taxes. But the difference between the two is almost exactly the same. It's about 152,000. We're going to lose on one end and 152 approximately we can pick up by doing the alternative schedule on the motor vehicle.
Bye, sir.
Once you opt into this, are you able to remove yourself on the next year or how does that work? Are you in forever?
Right now, there's no provisions that I know of within the amended legislation to go back and forth. But we have to also keep in mind that this legislation has changed three times in two years.
Yeah, they, interestingly, they changed it before they even had a chance to implement.
Implement it. Yes. Yep. And then after grand lists were done, they changed it.
Other questions or comments for Helen? So we need, we need to, if, if we're to elect to do this, we need to do this in short order, right?
Yes, before we start the new grand list, first.
October 1st.
Excuse me. Um, we, yeah, we'll get the list approximately October 15th to start working on it.
And is it, am I right in saying that? Well, I think I'm right in saying that, you know, so not everybody owns, owns a home, so not everybody pays real estate property taxes. But they, but, so people who are renters would be, would be seeing their car taxes go up instead of us having to make up that difference in the grand list by passing that on to homeowners. There's going to be a loss of revenue.
Again, it, it's, it's going to depend on what the mill rate does. Because the, the, the assessment's going to stay steady.
Yes, right. But if there is.
One year.
If there is a revenue shortfall that needs to be made up. Um, and, and let's just say, let's just say that the mill rate doesn't change. If the revenue shortfall has to be made up, the choices are either status quo, which is effectively an increase on home taxes.
Correct.
Versus adopting, um, the, the 90% schedule, which is an increase on car taxes.
Correct. Which will affect everyone versus just affecting homeowners.
So that's an equity.
Yep.
Sure.
So what, what are you using now? You used to use the blue book before to get the value of a vehicle.
Now we're, we're using the manufacturer's suggested retail price, MSRP. And applying the percentage of depreciation based on how old the car is.
Oh, I see. Yeah, I, I was just reading the chart wrong. So, all right, I'll use, uh, I'll use my real example. Uh, I have a 2017 Tucson. So that would be, in your world, is that seven, eight or nine years old? Because of the grand list here. Seven, right? All right. So this year, um, under the standard practice, um, I would be paying 55% of MSRP. But if we were to make the change next year with now, with my now eight-year-old car, I would be paying 55% of MSRP. So assuming that the mill rate didn't change, neither would my car taxes.
Correct. So how are we going to get the revenue that we're losing if it?
Because if you didn't do that, um, my, my valuation on MSRP would go from 55 to 50 instead of 55 to 55.
Oh, good job.
So it, it basically stays flat.
At least for this year. Yep.
Okay.
So just because now I'm confused because you said 152,000, we were going to lose, um, from gravel pit solar, and this would be a means for us to gain that 152. But if he's saying that it's just going to be flat.
No, I'm saying the impact on me as taxpayer would be flat because whereas the value, the MSRP percentage evaluation of my car um, would go from 55% to 50%, instead it goes from 55% and stays at 55%.
So we're now losing from the motor vehicle side.
Oh, stays. The, the impact on the taxpayer is flat, assuming that, unless they got a new car.
Right, the new cars are.
If you got a new car, taxes are going up anyway. That's the way it works.
Unfortunately, I got a new car.
Well, okay, depending on what you had in the fork. Okay, I understand.
Well, Helen, what are our options regarding this? Just review that again. What, what are our options?
We can keep the original depreciation schedule.
Hmm.
It starts off with, um, 15% depreciation from the MSRP. Or can switch to the alter, alternate depreciation schedule, which starts off with 10% depreciation from the MSRP.
Municipalities are allowed to select either one of those.
Yes.
And the original came as part of the original legislation and then the alternate came after?
Yes, the alternate came in the spring after, um, assessors were discovering how much of a loss they were going to have on their motor vehicle grand lists.
Oh, in some respects, the original gave a benefit to the taxpayer by depreciating the rate of depreciation with the assessor. And the alternate doesn't give as much benefit to the taxpayer and withhold some of the benefit to the town.
You can't, you can't really look at it that way because it's a completely different way of a set of valuing. Prior to this last year, the 24 list, we were doing it based on the market value. This is based on MSRP.
Yeah. So under the NADA version, which is the, the original, that same, also true story, that same 2017 Hyundai Tucson that had the engine die in it, um, is going to have a vastly different value because of the wear and tear and the condition of the vehicle than if we were simply depreciating against MSRP and the age. I also recently learned that that's not to my benefit.
Except NADA doesn't, but, but Helen, when you apply NADA values, you don't, you don't look at the condition of the vehicle, really.
Absolutely not.
Don't, right.
Not anymore. We can't, we used to be able to have the Board of Assessment Appeals look at condition, mileage, engine replacement. Now they, they can only look at was the correct MSRP used to calculate the value.
They got rid of NADA because NADA was based upon someone else's data, market values, and it wasn't uniform. And it also varies depending upon where in the country you're looking. I mean, people, not everybody's NADA is, is, is adjusted to NADA depending.
There's different actions, different additions for different.
Then they came up with option one and option two, which are both based off of MSRP. But the original one gave a greater benefit compared to the new one to the taxpayer. And what's happening is if we vote to take the second one, then we're delaying the benefit to the taxpayer because the depreciation off the MSRP is slower. So we have to make a decision. Do I cap more income for the taxpayer? Or do we want to give the benefit of the statute to the taxpayer?
The, the policy is actually worse than that, uh, because, and this was foolish for the legislature to do, but um, it, it effectively puts towns in competition with each other instead of setting a uniform rate when their intention was to set a uniform rate. I mean, their stated intention in taking up the bill was to make things uniform across the state. Um, and they, they did, in solving their problem, exactly the opposite of what they had set out to do.
So actually I'm gonna, I think we should keep the, the, the first one, the table one option, because I think that slowing, when cars, cars depreciate very quickly and they should depreciate quickly and they don't, a lot of cars don't hold their values. And people are going to be overtaxed if we don't give them the appropriate amount of depreciation. And someone has a 2017 car, shouldn't be paying 55% of the value. Should depreciate to 50%. To me, that's fair because otherwise the towns are collecting more revenue than they're entitled to. And even if it means we're going to have less taxes, this is the methodology that they wanted. We should, I think we should give the benefit to the, to the, to the motor vehicle owner in terms of allowing them to have the maximum amount of depreciation that the law allows.
To the detriment of the homeowner.
No, the homeowner is, everybody, everybody is detrimented when someone else benefits. If they pay fair taxes for cars, then someone else is going to make up for it unless we reduce our budget and we deal with it in the budget. And the same is what happened with revale, you know, the homeowner's bore the brunt of it. But I think that we should give the taxpayer the maximum benefit that the law allows in terms of valuing their vehicles. I don't think it's fair to, to have a higher rate of valuation for their vehicles and pay, have them pay higher taxes when the law allows us to have a lower rate, maximum depreciation. I'm going to side with the, the vehicle owner on this one.
And, and not to be confrontational, but just to throw one more comment into the whole spiel of how for the past century, people have been complaining how unfair the motor vehicle tax is. Um, we do have the issue of classic, collectible cars worth, in some cases, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars that are assessed for $500. So the equity, no matter how we try, because they put a classic plate on it. So no matter how we try to be fair and equitable, there's always, there's always some flies in the ointment.
I just think getting a bill, if you have two cars in your home and you're getting bills of $500 or $600 every single year, it comes out slowly for your cars, you're paying a lot of taxes just for the privilege of having a car. When you pay for your car, you pay taxes to buy the car, you pay for, pay for your interest on your car, and you have to pay every year taxes for that car. It's not, it's not for, for real property where you own a home and the value of the home fluctuates and you pay taxes. People need cars for transportation. And if you choose to buy a $100,000 car, $75,000 car, you're going to pay more taxes, of course. But average people are getting bills of like four, $500, $600 for their cars. And until your car really depreciates to being like very low value, you're paying a lot of taxes. I think the bills for, for motor vehicle taxes are really damaging, not damaging, they can be really burdensome on a lot of families to get those bills once a year for your car, you know, hundreds of dollars for each vehicle. That can be really hard. And if you have a home, you plan for it, of course. I, I think that the vehicle owner should get the benefit of the law, which is, and I understand there's two versions of the law, but they should get the maximum benefit.
To the detriment of the homeowner.
It's not to the detriment of the homeowner. Everybody is in flux. One person pays, another, we can cut our budget to make up for it. We don't have to, we could save the money somewhere else. It's not to the detriment of the homeowner. The homeowner, it's, 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 we had a revale and you say, well, to the detriment of the homeowner because the commercial property's. because the commercial property's got a big break on the revow because their properties didn't go up as much. Did we say, oh, we're going to correct it and make them pay more because it's not fair? No, we just had to deal with it, that's the way life is.
Both tables depreciate 5% per year.
What was that?
Both tables have the same 5% depreciation. It's like the first year that's going to.
First year we implement it or the first year the car is purchased?
The newer the car, the newer the car, the higher the MSP, MSRP. We'll set the standard, but then it's still going to be 5% each year, down to the minimum 20% or 15%, not to be less than $500.
So same questions, I think I understand this, but again, my, my, I guess, eight-year-old, very eight-year-old vehicle, is that eight years old or is it one years old?
Eight.
Okay, so you're gonna, you're gonna retroactively look back to see what the 2017 MSRP.
We're going to look at the original MSRP, yep, and then apply the depreciation for the eight-year-old vehicle.
The extent itself is really, like, I'll tell you, I've always thought the car tax was a ripoff, right? But, you know, this is no better because, you know, you're, you're saying that you're taking the market out of it by not using NADA. But over, you know, after COVID, the car, MSRPs, you know, cars went up ridiculously and they haven't come back down.
So did ADA, no.
Right, so.
That was the average retail fail, it was. And that's what they're trying to address with this, it's just.
If you get a good deal on your car and you pay less than MSRP, you don't get the benefit. And if you choose to overpay it because you want the car and it's in high demand, you don't, you don't have to pay more.
But that was the point in the minds of the legislature was to even it out so that it was based on, everybody was based on MSRP, not condition or, or how much they paid for it versus the, it, it, it's, no matter how you get it, motor vehicle taxes are never going to be fair and equal, even though we try.
I mean, as far as the homeowner taking the brunt, and I, it's not loss of me, but let's also not forget that the homeowner also has a car that they're paying taxes on. And they probably appreciate that break too, so I don't know if it comes, if it's a wash or not, but just from the philosophy of, I think we should not be taxing cars like this, but I'm, I'm not for the alternative either.
Good. Ladies?
I agree with both what Keith and Alan said, I'm not in favor of opting into this. I think if we're able to give some relief to the car owner, we should be doing it, not, not bringing in more money at their expense. I don't think it's fair, so I'm not in favor of it.
And if I can just interject with one other comment, and again, I just do as the law tells me to do. And I forgot where I was, oh, there's at last count, 106 out of 169 towns. So the getting equitable from town to town was one of the other reasons this was done before they amended it, that's all.
Really surprised they left municipal discretion as part of it. And that almost seems like they, they missed it, they didn't think that through.
I have letters, I have a letter in my file from like 1908 where a legislature complained how unfair the motor vehicle tax was.
In 9, no, 8?
Yes.
Well, it's gotta be the first one.
Yeah, pretty much, pretty much, but I mean, yeah, it's just been, I've been doing this for like 45 years and every year they talk about trying to make it more. And this is the first time I've actually seen a change, not saying it's a good change, but.
Do you ever hate it? The municipal leaders were like, absolutely not. Okay, well, I think we're done.
Thank you.
Come again soon.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, this is going to be a little weird, but we have ordinance to consider pertaining to zoning and I'm going to introduce Chief Carl to talk about it. And with some support as necessary from the planning department, but Chief, good evening, thanks for hanging in there.
Oh, thank you. And to hear, I thought, I was thinking everybody was here tonight to see Deputy Chief and I. But as I work through this deflated ego syndrome, let me get through this. So, what's, what's the driving force for this is, is our radio project. Most of you or everybody should know at this point about the radio project. And the way it's designed or engineered is requires the town to establish two new towers, one on Chamberlain Road and one at the police department. The police department has a tower already, but this one will be 70 feet, which is a little higher. The one on Chamberlain Road will be 180 feet. So before I read a prepared statement, I wanted to break down a couple of things on why we're trying to do what we're trying to do. So I broke this down into public safety necessity, and it's essential infrastructure, emergency preparedness and non-negotiable requirements. So for essential infrastructure, the radio towers are the backbone of the police, fire, ambulance and public works communication. Without them, response time and coordination can be severely hampered. So emergency preparedness, reliability, reliable communications, critical in national, natural, natural disasters, severe weather and large-scale incidents. So we, we want our radio system to work and, and our existing one right now is, is, is a bad deed of, of, of replacement. And so the non-negotiable requirement is what is driving some of this. Radio systems are designed to meet regional and federal inoperability requirements, standards. The placement and the height are often dictated by engineering needs and not zoning preferences. So what happens when you engineer these things is that the state of Connecticut and the federal government requires that there's certain coverage in town. And Motorola has to provide 95% coverage, so that's the average person that's out there in the field with a radio on their hip in full, full summer with all the leaves and all the, all the things out and a shoulder mic. The testing has to cover 95% of the town for that mapping at what's called a 6 dB loss, which means when they go into a building, there has to be penetration into the building, the radios have to work, okay? So what dictates that is the sick, the three towers that are in Windsor, the one that connects to the state of Connecticut connects to the three in Windsor, which will connect to the three that are here. The new tower at Chamberlain, the tower at Prospect Hill that already exists, and the new tower at the police department that's got to be a little higher. It's a line of sight or microwave, so the location was selected based off of testing beaten 95% and the height requirement for where it had to be and line of sight with all, making a ring with all of the other towers. So you can imagine, you can't just pick a spot and say, we're going to put a tower here, right? So zoning sort of takes a backseat to some of that when you're trying to plan what you're trying to do. The second part of it is legal precedent and considerations. Municipal exemptions already exist, it's common. So many towns in Connecticut and across the United States exempt municipal infrastructure projects from zoning requirements because they, because of the, the public good, right? So precedent exists, schools, fire departments and municipality, municipal facilities are frequently exempt to ensure that essential services are not blocked by zoning conflicts. The, the next part of it, operational and technical requirements. Optimal tire, tire, tire placement, I talked a little bit about this, but engineering studies typically identify locations, sites, heights necessary for reliable signal coverage, alternative zoning complaints. Sites may fail, so alternate zoning, excuse me, alternate zoning compliant sites may fail the testing. So, and there's coverage gap eliminations, selecting the site are critical to eliminate existing dead zones. But we selected this site so that in this side of town, Warehouse Point side of town has different issues than Broadbrook. And then anybody that has a radio or knows in the fire department, when you go into infrastructures in Broadbrook and you're away from that Prospect Hill tower, there's the fire departments and the ambulance and the police have a hard time getting out of certain structures, certainly when they're in valleys, and this is going to eliminate that, this gives us the 95% coverage for that. Bear with me, two more sort of concerns. Town authority and control, this is town-owned land, the ordinance would only apply to municipal property, not private land. Ensuring residents are not negatively impacted or go by unchecked development. And checks and balances, the Board of Selectmen, if, if I'm reading this right, and correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, the Board of Selectmen retains oversight on any project approval, ensuring accountability while avoiding unnecessary zoning delays. The benefit to the community, improved public safety response, reduced liability and shared use potential. Lastly, I'll, I'll talk about the urgency and strategic planning. We have an aging structure, there's grant deadlines that we have, and this is a long-term investment. If we had to use the typical democratic process or it out to zoning, we're going to have delays. I won't speak, I can speak about it, but I don't want to speak intelligently when there's more competent people that are in the room. But it's going to be a delay in what we actually need to do for the, for the project moving forward. The project is scheduled for testing in the summertime between June 1 and September, summer of '27. Okay, so what has to happen for it, I talked about the foliage had to be out, had to be in full foliage and stuff. It has to be scheduled for that, I don't think we're going to make this June, so we're going to have to be on next June. If we have a delay in building the tower, we'll be in the June of 2028. Our funding runs out on the grant in October of 2029. Now, I, I would imagine we could get an extension, but we don't want to be talking about this in this many years from now, all right? So I'm going to leave you with my last prepared statement, and, and trust me, I stand up comedy and do jokes better than I read, so bear with me. So, and I'm going to use my fancy glasses. They waited all day. Okay, so, good evening. I'm here tonight to request support for the ordinance change that would exempt town-owned property from local zoning regulations specifically for the purpose of constructing our new radio tower. The exemption is not about sidestepping zoning, it's about ensuring the town can meet its most critical responsibility, which is protecting public safety. Our police, fire, ambulance and public works all depend on a reliable communication. Now, our system is also going to support social services, the town government, emergency management and the schools. It's the entire communication system. Engineering studies have shown that in order to eliminate coverage gaps and meeting federal inoperability standards, the tower must be placed at specific sites and heights. Unfortunately, our current zoning regulations don't allow for this. Without the exempt exemption, we risk delays, higher costs and potential ineffective infrastructure that leaves dangerous dead zones across the town. It's important to note that this ordinance would apply only to municipal property, not private land. The board would retain full oversight and any project approvals, ensuring accountability and transparency while removing unnecessary barriers that could jeopardize the safety of our residents. Many towns in Connecticut already exempt municipal projects from zoning for this exact reason. Because when it comes to critical infrastructure, public safety has, has to come first, and my belief has to come first. By moving forward with this change, we ensure fast response, better coordination in emergencies and stronger protection for the people we serve. This is not just a technical issue, this is a long-term investment in the safety, security and wellbeing of the entire community. So I urge the board to try to move this forward. And now that's, I'm, I'll take any, I'll take my fancy glasses off, I'll take any questions, any arrows, and anybody that has any comments or concerns, Selectman Yegel.
So I gave this a lot of thought, and I first want to start by saying I support moving to town meeting a very specific ordinance, let the public vote on it, and it would say that public safety infrastructure that's deemed to be essential, that's shown by a professional, that the site is, is critical for the project, your words. If it's specific for this project or for public safety project that's, that's essential and necessary, then I, I support moving that to a town meeting for vote, for an ordinance. However, this ordinance isn't that at all, and I kind of want to put a dagger in through the heart of this thing, but we never have to see it again. And I want to explain why the current ordinance is so insane, really. And it has nothing to do with what I just said about supporting a specific ordinance. But this ordinance is so broad that it exempts from town-owned property any public improvement, which includes municipal buildings, utilities and infrastructure, parks and recreation, communications, and any other construction project funded in whole or part by the town or carried out under contract with the town or town property. And that last part is allowing for public-private partnerships where the project could be funded in whole or part by the town on town property, but it could be a private, a private project on, on town property.
Where, where are you looking?
I'm reading the ordinance.
I know specifically where you're looking.
Is that the last one?
It has all, it has all the definitions. It has exemption from zoning regulations, notwithstanding the, anything on town property would be exempted.
Well, right, but I'm saying, where, where is the public-private thing, where'd that come from?
Because it says it has to be funded in whole or part by the town. It could be funded, it could be funded by a private, it doesn't have to be funded by the town. Here's the problem, this removes these projects entirely from zoning regulations. There's no zoning oversight on anything on town-owned property at all. There is no conditions, performance conditions that can be applied, there's no planning and zoning review, just a cursory 30-day notice. Here's what the residents and taxpayers lose, there's no binding standards, no enforceable conditions. There's no setbacks or buffers that can be ordered for any of these municipal projects whatsoever. If it's next to your property, too bad, there's no zoning buffers, they can put lights on the, on town property that will spill over into your property, there's nothing you can do about it, there's no zoning that applies. They don't have to decide when the lights go off, they don't have to decide where the lights are going to be. There's no control over noise, lighting, hours of operation, screening of outdoor storage, access management and parking, traffic mitigation, drainage, drainage, erosion, construction controls. And there's no determination of compatibility with the adjacent neighborhoods whatsoever. That's what planning and zoning does for us. There's no meaningful public hearing at planning and zoning, there's no site plan or a special permit review. There's no planning or zoning hearing where butters are alerted and presented, can present testimony on traffic, noise, flooding, safety, property impacts. There's no appeal rights. If you don't like it, too bad, you don't have a right to take an appeal as you could for planning and zoning decision. There's no zoning decision, there's nothing to appeal. Forget about it, if you don't like it, it's too bad if it's town-owned property, and it could be funded by a private entity and built on town-owned property. You could have a large pri, public-private loophole. Funding in whole or part by the town or done under contract or agreement with the town on town property, it says. That language can sweep in public-private partnerships. Vendors operating on town property don't have to meet zoning regulations, all right? You don't have, they don't have to do that.
What we'd be doing here, isn't it?
Utility and communications and solutions, revenue generating facilities, no zoning regulations. Town can use sites wherever it buys land, the town can buy land anywhere and this, this runs with the new land, just because they purchased it. They could do, the town could do high-density housing. The town could do a public housing project or high-density housing on town-owned land in partnership with a private entity. And there's no zoning regulations whatsoever that's going to apply to that high-density housing.
Yeah, but you would have.
Let me finish for a second, Marie, and then I'll answer your question. There's no buffer, there's no setbacks, there's no buffering, there's no traffic mitigation. Neighbors lose a chance to present site-specific facts, they lose a right to appeal. And let me give you some examples, sports lighting on fields. There was an issue with the sports lighting over at the community center behind the fields there, the neighbor was affected. There was an appeal with the zoning, and there was a settlement on that because they were affected by the lighting, that goes away. That's, that's not going to happen again. Public Works wants to put a public works facility next to your home or in a neighborhood, they want to put a salt shed in. They want to store debris on, on a lot in town, anywhere, a public property, next to your home, they get to do that. You have no rights to request that planning and zoning has to do that approval. The, the communication towers, I understand the necessity for the, the urgency because this is a, this is a a public safety project. But if it wasn't public safety and the town wanted to put a cell tower anywhere to rent out to cell companies to make money, they could do it. No zoning, no zoning regulations at all, that's not public safety. So you know, the problem with this is that this is, this is. Unbelievable that any voter would want to give up his rights or her rights. Why would any voter, any resident, any commercial property owner want to give up? Zoning zoning regulation of town projects? Who would do that? Why would anyone, why would anybody vote against their own interests? We all want to have community where we have zoning regulations. Everybody is really pissed off about what's happening with the solar over there. Industrial solar, because we say we can't control it, planning and zoning has no control. Well, guess what? It's not going to be just industrial solar that we have no control over, we're going to be, we have zero control over municipally owned property, town owned property. Just like the solar, we can't do anything about it? We can't do anything about this either. There's no oversight and prohibition, town can do whatever he wants. So I think we should just like stab it in the heart and put an end to it, we need a replacement ordinance to bring to the town meeting. That says specifically. It's a public safety infrastructure project and is deemed essential. And a professional determines that the site is essential for the project. Then it's exempt from planning and zoning regulations. And that's it. That's it, why wouldn't, why would we even consider this ordinance at all? Like, why is this even in front of us? If we're doing the the issue with with public safety, why would we even be considering this ordinance? At all, I don't understand. I want, I think we should just like kill it right now.
Other comments?
I'll go.
Go ahead.
It won't be nearly as dramatic or long winded.
Thank you.
Sorry.
He's a lawyer.
I do agree though, and I mean, when I read through this in my packet, this is far, far too broad. And I would like to see it severely narrowed. But I was also wondering. Are there other options, you know, like, you know, the state has an open, every year they have an open wetlands permit, they can. Dig in the river for two years, they don't have to come see us. Since this is a state funded project and and part of, you know, it's going to end up being saying, is there some sort of waiver? Department of Public Safety or something, is there some sort of waiver that applies here? For this that we can set, you know, lay this down in front of the planning and zoning and say. You know, they said we could, you know, much like they, the state does with anything else, I'm wondering, is that, is that an option?
So so first of all, I'm sorry, go ahead. I interrupted.
And I forget, now I forget the second part I was going to say that, but. Two things, yeah. So it has to be strictly, strictly cut down, since it's too, too, too much. And then maybe there's another way to go from the state level, since this is a state project and it's.
Not all state.
Sure. So anyway, those are my thoughts.
My recollection in talking with, I think it was Scott or Clayton, is that we still have to go through the normal process. That they don't have superseding jurisdiction there, is that your recollection?
That is, that is true, the the only process. So I was speaking directly to the development of the towers, I wasn't advocating for Millstone two point O to be on Willem Road. Not saying that at all. I'm speaking, I have a radio project, I'm the project manager, single point of contact, and I'm trying to get this through. The only thing I can tell you is that the Siding Council doesn't have any jurisdiction over public safety. We don't have to go to the Siding Council and do all of that if we were trying to do a communication tower. For Ryzen or any of those other ones. There's a tower that's being proposed almost through the Siding Council, a little down the road, they've had to jump through tremendous hoops. This is a public safety and and there's two towers that. The zoning doesn't allow for it in either location, so trying to speed up the the process to not have to go through. A tax amendment and send it to CROG and bring it back to the town for a public hearing and a hundred and twenty day delay. I could be wrong, I don't want to speak intelligently about that, there's probably other issues with that. I'm trying to narrowly find a way to keep this project moving forward. And hit the the deadlines, because even if we got approval today, building this thing is not, can't happen tomorrow. There's, they have to order it and stuff, so. But to answer your question, there is no, we trump everything wand that gets us to where we are.
Okay, so yeah, and I think we just need to cut it down.
But they can't even, again, I might, I might, I was, it was a long meeting on Tuesday. My recollection is they can't even order the equipment until we have this in place, did I hear that wrong? It was a long day, that was like a six hour meeting.
It was, it was a very long day, it's a concept design review. At they can't order the equipment until we signed that we agree to the concept design review.
And that that involves knowing that the site works.
Yes. Knowing that this site works now, obviously. There's not a lot, if we can go through the general process, but public safety trumps a lot of things, we can get through the process. I mean, obviously, if we find dinosaur bones or things like that or whatever. It's just money, you know, you can drill through ledge, you can do things, you can straighten it out, it's just money, we're going to try to avoid spending money. But it's just money, and so do we want to do that? No, can we shift it maybe a few feet here or there? This site was chosen specifically, and I've spoken to two people that are in the area that are concerned about that. There's definitely going to be concerns about this, property depreciations, what does the microwave really do, what kind of transmissions? But and their concerns are my concerns, just like everything, but. The 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 project, probably the equipment probably will be ordered and it's, we're going to move forward with the site to the best we can, but we need permissions to do that. And so the delay would be if we have to go through the zoning process, if we ultimately got denied. We would have to find another location, that that other location. Would still have the property be on town owned property, because Avon went through this and they had location after location after location on private land delayed for almost a decade. And so our rented radio system eventually is going to be far more expensive than we even want to consider. We're talking a hundred thousand dollars in rental of. Ten to fifty thousand dollars a month, a month for a failed system. That we that we could have, it's very, very expensive, because they got you over to Beryl, you can't, there's nothing you can do about it, I think we'd probably be on a more ten thousand dollar system. But we'd have to find another location, we'd have to spend about thirty to thirty five thousand dollars for the microwave connection to make sure that it made the connection all over again. We'd have to go back through the design review, the state of Connecticut. Would have to agree to it, Motorola engineers would have to come out and map it again. And make sure we got that ninety five percent threshold, so. I I understand exactly where. Select man Yagelov's coming from, and I urge you, if you can possibly narrow it down to get that and maybe be as specific as. This project or public safety. It probably, you know, I'm here to be the cheerleader of it, it's probably in the best interest of the town. Could we move it if we had to? Yes, it's going to come at tremendous costs and we might. Get outside that five year buffer of October twenty twenty nine is when the bond is supposed to be spent by.
I need to, so this, this is a model that was provided by CCM. Oh, it's, they have a bank of, I don't know where this comes from, but they have a repository of ordinance.
I'll take responsibility for a lot of things, but I didn't author the, it's just everybody does.
Sir, I understand the urgency of having something like this in place sooner rather than later, so we don't delay the project. But I agree with what's been said that the way it's. Definitely raises concerns for other possible projects to come and it's too broad. So I also would be in favor of a specific ordinance just pertaining to this project if possible, I just think this. Too broad and it, we could have serious problems from it. But thank you for, I know you, I know what you're trying to.
I think we take all the criticisms, I, you know, I, that's what we do, and this, you got to avail yourself of the democratic process. I'm a huge believer and you're never going to hear me other than say, the people have to vote and you have to protect the people. I'm here to tell you as a public safety leader that this is urgent, this isn't, you know, I'm not here over exaggerating the need. But the tower needs to be where that tower is at at all possible, and how do we get there? As a team. So.
So the few weeks delay, we're good?
Yes.
With the right thing that we think will pass?
Yes. We we have some time, like I said, we do have some time, and they would order the product, it would stage down in Norcom, which is down in Nogatuck. It's a pretty robust, if you sat through the meeting, you would understand it's a pretty robust process.
I promise you, if you sat through the meeting, you would not understand.
Yeah, it's difficult, I understand, I actually stood here throughout the entire meeting and I understood a lot more than I did three years ago. Which is strange. And I understand enough that I never want to do this again. And the value of this to the town, if you're not joking all side. The towns that aren't doing this, Granby, Southfield, whatever, they're doing a great job, they're trying to find five million, six million, seven millions, all the town is a. There's a bunch of towns that are trying to do this, they'll be replacing the system in ten years, we will not. This is a one and done, we're replacing a system from circa oh three. And if we didn't do something like this, now it's going to be expensive to keep up. But we're always going to have the latest and greatest in the state of Connecticut and everybody's gravitating that, and eventually, if you're not on the state system. You will be isolated on your own and you'll be replacing your system with technology probably faster than ten years. You'll be obsolete, and so I think this is very good for for the town of East Windsor, it's just how do we get there?
You said, I'm going to, I'll feed you, I'm going to draft something up and you can throw it into your mix of whoever's going to write this. But I, I'll just draft up a quick ordinance and I'll send it to you to give to whatever town attorney or throw it into your mix. Based upon what I said tonight about narrowing it, and then maybe you can. Help a little bit, I don't know.
Thank you, sir. No problem. Thank you. Oh, yes, absolutely.
Say that again.
That's right.
So we don't have, I don't have cut sheets for the building, I don't have, I have a very generic sketch. That I was going to present before the building, maybe before the meeting got canceled, so I had something. You know, the site had, there hasn't been a bore site, there's NEPA hasn't been done, there's a lot of things that haven't been done. So this is the preliminary stage, but they all, you know, it all comes together to get to where ours. But I certainly have a have a proposal, I have all the things, I probably can't answer all your questions, but I can get you in touch with the people who can. So.
It might be worth.
A hundred percent.
I mean, I agree with what they're saying. But the caveat inherent to me, the way this is written, the exemption, and it says, however, this exemption shall not relieve the town. Or his agents from compliance with, and it goes through all building codes, federal, blah, 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 blah. I think that's all good. So. You got to follow all the same rules and regulations regardless of what the other says, whether it's ARC or. Or DPW, they still got to come from you and follow all those processes, correct? The way this is written?
But Marie, there's no, there would be no regulations for setbacks. For the placement in terms of anything having to do with setbacks, barriers, height. What it looks like, impact on the community, those are not building code issues, those are all zoning issues. So even though they couldn't, you can't build in the wetlands, because that's wetlands. But all the regulations that planning and zoning regulates, like. Buffers, setbacks, I, that wouldn't be, none of those, none of those other bodies regulates that.
So those are currently in your. Rules and regulations that if certain things are done, this is whatever, is that done on a case by case basis?
In zoning regulations?
Yeah.
The zoning regulations have been saying. Allows for municipal infrastructure to go in any zone. I think there is a short section. Part of communications. Power heights and preferences now. And there is some discussion in there about for monopoles. Distance away from the property based on height of the.
So the PD one is a monopole. We obviously wouldn't, the one in Chamberlain satisfies the fall zone, which is one point five times the height. So it's got to be two hundred and fifty feet away from any property, which is considered. The one at the PD would not, there's existing ones attached to the building, the monopole is going to be just a few feet off. Of that building and across the roof, what's that?
The problem.
Well, there's, yeah, there's, there's more, there's zoning issue, plus that. Unless I'm reading the zoning wrong, that's not even supposed to be in that area. But I mean, we we have a flagpole down there, that's going to be taller than a monopole, but. You know, that's probably a different issue.
So are you saying we don't need this at all?
When will we know?
Well, well, I would. Next time we invite Ruth to a meeting, apparently. We, we messed up by not inviting you to the radio.
Ruth Ann, the the section you just, we talked about you, I think you said that. You were saying maybe all or none for exemptions, I think you said something like you think it might be all or none. When I looked it up here, A F two E, which is the one. It says a municipality may by vote of its legislative body exempt municipal property from the regulations. But I don't know what that means, like one property. But I think, I think the question would be if we pass the ordinance to exempt this specific property. Would that be legal? And I would think may, I mean, I'd have to look at the ORLR, but reading this, it doesn't say all municipal property. It just says municipal property, so.
So if we were to read it as all municipal property, couldn't we still make an ordinance that says, but except for this use specifically? That we, you know, so, so then we're opening it up, all municipal property to this use, which we're, you know. How often are you going to build a hundred, a two hundred and fifty foot tower?
So I think that's kind of a different question, like an ordinance to say, any municipal property, you can build this use without zoning versus. You can build that without zoning, that's exempted specifically, it's a slight, I think it's a slightly different question. But. You know, this concept, as you understand, you know, this idea, I just don't think voters are going to support this, and I think it puts at jeopardy. If we make an effort to try to do it this way and voters turn it down. Then we lost the opportunity to get them to vote yes, a thumbs up for the emergency communications town.
I, 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 I would, I would beg you to be as specific as you possibly can to include it into this. And not put language in there where they might misinterpret and vote it down, voting, voting this down. Could create significant problems, it'll definitely run up the cost. Which is what we're trying not to do, but I know that there's got to be some, you know, in Motorola has a team of engineers that write this up. They contract with private company called Aerosmith, and they come in with the state of Connecticut engineers and all the people that were in that meeting. We don't, like I said, we don't have design plans or anything yet, the, the, nothing on the land has been done, we have to do balloon testing and all kinds of stuff. That, you know, it's, it's ahead of what we're doing right now. But I know that they work through zoning issues and zoning towns that they do, there's thirty projects in the state of Connecticut and are working through that. So there's got to be some oversight at some point. I, I, I'm just wondering, you know, and I just, you know, my. I, I'm, you know, I was hired to be a chief of police and I look at the zoning and I'm not an expert in zoning, I'm not, you know, I have no idea how. I wish it was a run a mill robbery, we were happening right now, I could do that with my eyes closed. But I'm standing up here, I got Ruth Ann, those far more than me, I realize I'm trying to, you know, get this needle through here, but. You know, I'm not trying to be, we got to be transparent, I'm being transparent and I, and I urge you, whatever we do, let's make sure we get it right so that the voters understand it. And we can try to get this and keep it on time. We could do that, right? And my mea culpa, if this got ahead, there was so much going on, there was really nothing, I could come to you and sit in your office, but I can't even show you a drawing. So when you're like, oh, what's going on? I can take you off the the field and say it should be about right here. But other than that, I really can't tell you much.
I realize now why Melissa's still here. Sorry about that.
All set? Yeah, we'll see you in a few minutes.
Yeah, we'll see you in a few minutes. Um, okay, so there is a request for an alcohol exemption uh, at East Windsor Park. The applicant is the uh, Ms. Parks and Recreation is for the last summer concert. And the reason it's not covered by the previous one is because the last summer concert, or well, one of the last summer concerts got rained out and then postponed again due to illness. So the final, final, final summer concert is going to be next Friday from 5 to 7, right? 5 to 7? 5:30, 7:30, um, at East Windsor Park. That's outside of the application that she put forward in the springtime. So she asked if she had to come back and I said yes, and then I forgot that that's why she was still sitting in the back.
Sorry. Make a motion to accept the application for alcoholic beverages for the East Windsor Park concert.
There are second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, madam. All right, so selectmen's reports.
Tax refunds.
Tax refunds.
Tax refunds.
Did we vote to hold G?
We're not holding G. G's, G's no mas. I'm just gonna write it.
Well, G is uh.
Oh, yeah, we need, we need to come back to that after open session, yes.
Move that we hold Agenda Item 9G until after executive session.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Now we'll go to tax refunds.
Move to approve the tax refunds totaling $17,558.73.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Tax refunds. Okay, um, Dr. Kudron, Denise Menard and I are continuing to work closely with our legislators and consultants as we explore options for school renovation or new construction projects. Um, over the past few weeks, we've been brainstorming ways to maximize state reimbursement as much as we can, uh, which is a key step in keeping the local cost obviously as low as possible on these ones of taxpayers. Uh, the ad hoc committee will meet in early October to fine-tune the proposals that they've been working on and start inviting the community into that conversation. Um, we want your input as we discuss what the projects might look like, what a realistic timeline would be and what the potential costs may be. Um, this is still in the research phase. Um, it's still, there's a lot of conversations that are happening um, at, at upper staff levels. Uh, but we expect to hear much more about where things are developing as the fall moves along. Um, we talked quite a bit about it tonight, but our largest infrastructure project right now is the replacement of the town's emergency radio system. Uh, a critical update that ensures public safety, uh, which is police, fire, EMS, uh, public works, uh, social services, emergency management, the town and the schools, um, can all communicate when every second counts. Um, this week, we hit an important milestone by completing the contract design review with Motorola. With that step behind us, um, Motorola can begin the engineering for the project and we, again, we anticipate the construction to start sometime next year, we hope. Um, the pension board met last night. Um, I'm gonna let Al talk more about that, but one point that um, I do want to share is that um, the pension investment is now uh, at 87% uh, funded, which is a very healthy position for municipal government to be in. Um, unfortunately, our, our final summer concert has been postponed again and that's going to be on September 12th, which we just discussed. Um, looking ahead, Parks and Recreation is inviting town offices, local businesses and community groups to host a booth at this year's Haunted Highway on October 23rd from 5 to 7 p.m. Um, it's always a fun event and if you'd like to host a booth, please contact Community Services. Um, they do, the Senior Services Department does have a full schedule this September. Um, they've got an AARP Smart Driver course that's being offered, a dementia awareness lecture, trip to the Big E. Um, and again, I mentioned Einstein's, uh, a discussion of Einstein's theory of relativity. Um, and finally, many of you have noticed that work on the Styles Bridge project is still underway. Uh, the Department of Transportation originally projected a November 10th completion date. And as of now, they have not indicated any delays as far as, I have not heard anything. Have you? Okay, so they're still saying November 10th.
It was just down there and yes, rumble remains that they're, right? And I have a hard time leaving yet.
So do I. But they haven't told us otherwise, so we're operating.
Either, so I have way ahead of my comfort zone today.
So uh, we're still operating under a November 10th completion date. If we are notified by DOT that that's going to take longer than that, we'll, we'll share that information publicly. That's all I have to share. Right?
Yeah.
Uh, Keith?
I'm sad, thanks.
Al?
Uh, like you said, oh wait, let me back up. Uh, Wetlands met a special meeting, uh, and the only thing that was discussed was a public hearing for the Bridge Street project for the 318 apartments. Um, and that passed, uh, with, um, it was, I don't think there was really any public input at that point in time. Um, so that's gone to Wetlands and that will now show up on the Planning and Zoning uh, agenda for this next meeting uh, coming up next week. Uh, then pension, like you said, we met uh, last night, 87% is correct. Um, we're currently sitting at around 9% return for this year, which is uh, not bad. Um, and we signed a new investment direction. Basically, uh, you know, this has been after a, a number of discussions and uh, on the advice of our uh, millman, uh, we've kind of backed off uh, uh, the risk a little bit for, as far as the benchmark goes. So we kind of cut it down, uh, the window down a little bit, so we don't have to be as aggressive now that we are so well-funded. Um, and so we're taking a little bit of risk off the table and that will happen over, um, you know, the next couple of quarters. But um, that's it for that.
Sir?
Nothing this evening.
All right, um, two, well, we will have an executive session. Um, it will include at different points, uh, Chief Carl and Chief Rude. Um, but I do want to note that while listed uh, on the agenda, um, we will not be taking up the tax appeals matters. Uh, we thought there was gonna be some uh, information to share there, but it, there is not, so that is not coming up. Uh, may I have a motion to go into executive session?
Yep, motion to go into executive session.
Miss the second public participation.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, I just didn't know if, just.
Nah, you're absolutely right. I'm just tired.
Understood, understood.
Uh, well, before we go into executive session, we'll do public participation. Uh, the second opportunity for members of the public to address the board, same rules for board, please state your name and your address, state business, and I'll first recognize Mr. Shane.
Fort Town Fair.
Uh, I was gonna. Well. Uh, so I was gonna talk to them uh, privately, uh, but I've been invited to be the grand marshal of the Fort Town Fair, which is something I'd like to extend to the, to board to participate in as well. Um, but I was gonna talk to them about that later on. Thank you. Yes, sir, name and address.
Stan Blesky, Ryse Street. Um, just being an objective observer here and listening to Chief Carl, uh, yeah, whole scenario that he laid out there. And obviously, the, the tower's not gonna fit to any of the regular zoning and everything else like that. That almost sounds like if you're looking inside your eyes and brush your teeth, you bring that into the CBA. Because there are the ones who have to hear what hardship is. The hardship, I thought Carl explained quite well with my training, because I was a former CBA member. Um, and the hardship is it's gonna land on a piece of property that's not, again, it's, it's not, it's a non-conforming. It, it's something that, you know, you may want to consider to dot your eyes and brush your teeth to keep yourself transparent about it. I mean, and you've got your urgency and is your public safe and that's, that's 20 of driving forces. I mean, maybe it works, maybe it doesn't. It's just a suggestion.
Thank you.
The board and Chief Carl might be, it's getting here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other public participation? Yes, sir, name and address.
I'm Buckley. James Clark, James Clark, Rock Brook. I just have to comment, Mr. Baker, on the colorful shoe you're wearing. Didn't see anything like it before.
You want them?
No, they wouldn't fit. Yeah, it is getting late.
Yeah, wow. Is there anybody online who would like to address the members of the board's select?
Big assets.
Asking a second time, anybody online who would like to address the board? Hearing none, now I would ask for a motion to go into executive session.
I move we go into executive session.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is on executive session at 10:49. All right, it is 12:30 a.m. and we are out of executive session. Uh, we'll turn now to Agenda Item uh, 9G. Uh, discuss and vote on the employment agreement between the town and Police Chief Matthew J. Carl. Sarah?
Okay, um, I move to approve the employment agreement between the town of East Windsor and Matthew J. Carl Police Chief and authorize the signature of the first selectman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, uh, on a motion made by Sarah, seconded by Marie, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show, I cast a yea vote as well. With no further business to come before the board, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Move that we adjourn at 12:32 a.m.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 12:32 a.m.